Good evening esteemed colleagues, how's everyone doing? Alright. It's good to hear. Just a break. Are you there? Alright, let's do a quick check here. One, two, three, four, five, six. Alright, we got a crew. So, I'm gonna call to order the Royal Oak City Commission meeting for Monday, July 27, 2020, to order. With a roll call, Mayor Mike Fournier, present. Commissioner Douglas?
Present.
Commissioner Macy?
Here.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Present.
Commissioner Perush?
Here.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Here.
And Commissioner Dubach?
Here.
Alright, we got a full house this evening. We're gonna begin tonight with an invocation given by Mayor Pro Tem Perush, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we wake up each morning to discouraging news about violence in our cities and increasing death tolls from the pandemic, it is easy to get discouraged and lose hope. But if we focus on the efforts in our community to respond to these problems and the underlying issues that cause them, we can find reason to hope. In our own community, neighbors are delivering food and other necessities for homebound seniors and others who are at risk. Educators and parent volunteers are currently drafting work plans for the safe return to schools, whether it be at home or in person. Nonprofit organizations and individuals are stocking food pantries for those in poverty and for the homeless. Counselors are volunteering their time for assisting individuals who are having difficulty coping with the anxiety and uncertainty that these issues have brought and their efforts on individuals and families. And countless individuals have demonstrated either by marching or placing signs in their windows, or attending group discussions in the community, or otherwise demonstrating that as a community, there are very hard, serious social justice issues that need response and need attention. But that there is value in each and every one of us, and that we can get through the tough issues together by committing to fair and equal justice for all. As we meet here this evening, let us remember that as a community, Royal Oak has faced tough times before, and we made it through better and stronger. There is much in our community to give us hope. Let us keep that in mind as we go forth tonight. Amen.
Thank you Commissioner Perush, excellent words. Now's the time for the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're already at item number five on tonight's agenda, which is public comment. As has been the case for the last several meetings, as we meet here in a remote setting, we will be playing public comment. Callers have the opportunity to call in between 4:00 and 6:00 PM today and leave the public comment. I'll ask Ms. Schwanger to queue up the public comment and play when ready.
Good evening. My name is Alan Ashland, I am president of Royal Oak Manor. I am many concerns about number 10, the new proposal by Jonathan Whitson Associates. The problem I have is the parking and where vendors are. Is he gonna use parking lot P8 like he always does, or just P7? Is he gonna use all of Sixth Street, Williams, and Seventh Street? We have more people now that have moved in with more cars, which means I have more people to find a place for. A lot of these people cannot walk the quarter mile from Knowles to back to Royal Oak Manor, or park down at the parking lot and put more stress on the police department, having them shovel back and forth. His plan has nothing to say about parking, about what's going on, the crowd noise, about crossing the street, or anything. And again, as he does every year, he never consults or calls Royal Oak Manor for suggestions or anything. So, I have a lot of questions, and I'm sure I'll be listening, but I'm almost positive he will not answer most of them. So, thank you very much, that's all I have to say. And have a good evening.
Good evening, I'm a resident of Royal Oak. I just wanna say that the mayor and the city councils attempt to use political favors to violate your local city charter and rules and constitution is ridiculous and unfounded. The city needs to follow all guidelines and expectations that have been established for years in Royal Oak before they establish a quid pro quo business with the marijuana and pawn industry in Royal Oak. If the citizens and other city council members are not allowed to see some sort of plan or information, you should all resign your positions for violating the orders and recommendations that you swore to uphold when you took your oath of office. The marijuana and pawn shop businesses in Royal Oak only serve to diminish property values and force citizens to move out of Royal Oak, leaving the city abandoned and derelict. Be responsible, you were elected to uphold the city's rules, not your own political favors. Thank you.
Listen Gina, the recent disclosure that the city commission hid important evidence from public view, and also made fabricated claims that they had studied the issues very carefully and had access to studies of the Woodward corridor and the surrounding neighborhoods that indicated they would be safe, there wouldn't be crime, and no diminution of property values. Now we find out there's no studies. We found out that there is a map that supports the most important positions that the neighborhood had taken. It was only two weeks ago, the neighborhood wanted town hall meetings, they asked for eliminating Woodward from consideration because they didn't think it was safe, they had marijuana stores there, but they thought it was safe based on the information that the industrial area could be used. Now the map that's disclosed clearly shows supporting evidence that Woodward area, for the most part, is unsafe for the residents if marijuana is put there because they'd be within that 150-foot distance of the marijuana stores. There's a couple areas where they could go. It clearly shows there's plenty of room in the industrial area, even though some of you claim that there wouldn't be enough room, and that's why you had to move some of the stores into the Woodward corridor. The only studies that would be relevant are studies of Woodward and the neighborhoods surrounding it, the parking traffic and community impact, to see how this would work, and to give you some direction and give the public some direction. But you led us to believe you had those studies, and now the administration has confirmed there are no studies. There aren't even studies from other states or other cities that have been published. Those studies wouldn't be relevant anyway because Woodward is unique. A study that, on a street in Colorado, doesn't mean that the same thing will work on Woodward Avenue in Royal Oak, Michigan. It becomes very clear that you're backing into your desire to have stores on Woodward for reasons other than what you're publicly stating. And if things prove true as they have in the past, when you awarded 18 no-bid contracts to political contributors, it seems like the obvious conclusion here is that when you award licenses, they will go to your political contributors. They must want Woodward Avenue very bad. The political contributors must perceive Woodward as a goldmine for them, and you must perceive this as a goldmine for your next election. Since the no-bid contracts are all done, and those political contributions have stopped, you obviously need more money for the next election. And here is your goldmine. Woodward Avenue will pay though, the neighbors will pay. It'll be their homes, their families, that will be put at risk, and all because you won't take the time to do a public hearing and hear from them. I think the problem with the public hearing and a town hall meeting is questions will be asked, the public would vet your positions.
My name is Paul Bile, and I've been a Royal Oak resident for 29 years. The earth is getting hotter, and the seas are rising. Our conspicuous energy consumption over the last half-century must be reassessed and minimized. There's no time left to placate to the denial list and the faint of heart. It's time for bold and decisive action. Dear Royal Oak City Commissioners, please pass the resolution acknowledging the climate emergency and completing a greenhouse gas emissions inventory. Do your part advocating for environmental sustainability. Do what you can to protect the well-being of children everywhere. They will need all the help you can give them. Thanks. Bye.
This is Robert Luxon. I've lived on Greenway for over 40 years. I'm calling about the vote on the marijuana dispensaries. I wish I did check out the ones in Ferndale, in Hazel Park, just right around the outside, saw the way they operated. The building's been very nice and clean. I'm not advocating you for to put them or anything. I trust that people study where to and the effect they'll have on our cities. Have a blessed day.
Good afternoon, I'm calling to object to this concert business on Labor Day weekend. The amount of noise it causes to Royal Oak is unbearable, and given the fact that we're in the middle of a pandemic, there is little place to go to escape it. The people in the senior citizens building on the other side of Maine, on East Main and Sixth Street, can't escape it at all. I think that it is unconscionable that you would consider holding such an event at such a time. Thank you.
Hi, this is Cindy Grove, and I've already left a few messages in the past when it was open for comment. I would just like to voice my opposition again over the marijuana shop that is either going in at Golden Basket, or if there's something that's up for vote for the corridor on Woodward for multiple marijuana shops. That's just highly inappropriate with all the neighborhoods backing right up to that area. We have kids, we have kids walking, we have kids riding bikes. My kids are out right now. We don't need an influx of traffic, or people that just aren't from our neighborhood, just hanging around, parking, you know. This is just a neighborhood with families and kids, and we don't need that. If you need it in Royal Oak and you want it, and we all want it, then you can find another area that's a little bit more industrial, that isn't just a neighborhood. With a school right down the street, that's a direct route to Golden Basket, that's a cut-through street from Coolidge directly to Woodward, no thank you. There's parks everywhere in this neighborhood, also, no thank you. There's a church right across the street, no thank you. So, let's just keep it together and stop. I don't know how many meetings you guys need to have, but enough is enough. Just say no, be done with it. If you wanna do it, find another area, and I'm sure that we can all support that, that's fine, just keep it away from the kids. Thank you.
Nancy Forster, Royal Oak resident. I'm against pawn shops. From a personal standpoint, years back, we were robbed, and the people that robbed us, tied up people that weren't criminals to sell the items that they stole from us at pawn shops. Pawn shops provide a whole 'nother element of people that don't always have the best ideas in their minds. It gives criminal-type people the opportunity to scope out new neighborhoods, and houses, and people, and what their schedules are. There's plenty of pawn shops already in Southfield and in Pontiac. I know that there's some people, honest people, that sell items they don't need at pawn shops, but really, Royal Oak, we don't need to provide that element of people in our neighborhood. And putting a pawn shop on Woodward makes it so simple for criminals to just go down Woodward and then slide into any neighborhood and look out at the houses. Michelle, I mean, Tommy Michelle Watson, her MDLC number is 263803, was one of the criminals. And Alan Craig Wood, who later went on to murder Nancy Daring, was the other criminal that did a home invasion and stole thousands of dollars in property. And it's a criminal element that definitely used pawn shops to make a better life for themselves. And then the homeowners have to go and buy their stuff back from pawn shops. And it would be helpful if you would put a schedule of your meetings, and what the topic of the meeting is, and times that you're taking comments like this, either next door website, or in the CNG newspaper. Because the average Joe and Jane are so busy with their lives, they don't do the city commission meetings full-time, so they don't pay attention to the schedules, and they don't know about leaving messages like this. They wanna be involved, but they just don't know, they're busy with their lives. Thank you.
My name is Joel Blasstein. I'm a 33-plus-year resident of Royal Oak on Edgewood Drive, and I'm calling in support of the climate emergency community-wide greenhouse gas assessment and reduction goal-setting resolution that's before the city council commission today. I think it's very important that lacking better national and federal leadership on matters of climate, that we at the local level do all that we can to improve the situation that is really important and of great importance to future Royal Oak residents. Thank you. My name is Joel Bla-
This is Alberta Mackenzie, M-A-C-K-E-N-Z-I-E, 4108 Stanislaw Road. I am very much against the pawn shop and the marijuana shop going in where the Golden Basket was, and I do not support it at all. And for Mr. Fournier and Mr. Douglas, if it goes through, you two went ahead and approved it, you will not get my vote in the next election. So, just to let you know, I very much am against this whole thing about the pawn shop going in. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Larry Stafford, I live on Robinwood in Royal Oak. My concern tonight is the rezoning for the marijuana. I'd like to talk about the meeting you had on July 16. I went to the stores in Ferndale that you talked about quite a bit in your meetings. I went down and visited those stores, looked at the stores, very nice. One thing I did notice, they're an industrial area. The one building is an old Turner Manufacturing Building. It has a very large parking lot in the back where they used to put their semi-trucks and their storage racks. That is now a parking lot, which is pretty large parking lots. Also, one thing I wanna bring up, they are not near schools, churches, parks, and especially the residents of Ferndale. So, my thing is, I would like to see us rezone and put our stores in the industrial area. Secondly, what I would like to talk- Good evening, I'm Larry Stafford. Good evening to the mayor and city commission. Here we are another two weeks later, and more lies and deceit are coming out. And you can laugh and scoff about misinformation from people out there in the community trying to be active. The only misinformation that's coming out of city hall with you and your cronies on the commission. Unfortunately, none of you have listened to what people have said. We do appreciate Commissioner Lavasser and Commissioner Gibbs for actually listening to us, and unfortunately, the rest of you seem to not act inappropriately with deceitful information, but you actually just go out and do it, and then call us a bunch of idiots. So again, here we are two weeks later, yes, I'm calling again, and yes, I'm just as upset as I was two weeks ago and the week before that, and the month before that. So, what we can do here is what we've said all along. We don't give out variances to put in things. The marijuana shops should be classified as an adult business with 150-foot buffer from residents, and 1,000-foot buffer from schools, churches, and parks. That is what it says. Really making this look like this is a pay-to-play type situation, because we do know for a fact, there was no study done that you can produce and share with anybody. The survey may have been you over cocktails with a couple of people asking, hey, do you support it? Outside of that, you've had nothing to prove or give to the citizens of this city. Who, by the way, pay a lot in taxes, and we'd like to remain a nice and wanted place to live. If you notice I'm a little agitated, it's because you people don't listen. And then you smirk and scoff and think it's funny. It's more embarrassing than anything. This shouldn't even be an issue. Mayor Fournier, I know you have three small kids. How would you like them ending up at a marijuana shop? Or for the rest of you, I know some of you are older and probably don't have children right now. How would you like them? How would you like your grandchildren showing up? So, my point is, is, you know, we've said all along that we are willing to work with the mayor and the city commission as citizens, but we wanna be in the loop, not left out. And, you know, the appearance of inappropriate behavior by you guys is just unbelievable. Because again, when you're asked or you're given something like a map that clearly shows this, that you won't include in the agenda tonight, it's kind of funny, it's kind of embarrassing. This is the kind of crap that happens in Macomb County. A lot, not here. Not in the city of Royal Oak. Royal Oak has been a desirable place to be and live for years. I urge you again to reconsider what you're doing, because again, this is permanent. This doesn't end next week, this doesn't end in 20 years, it's for all time. So, consider your own children when you make this decision, and how they may get messed up in this business too. You can do this is to put an adjournment on this issue, and then start having some meaningful dialogues with the city, between the cit-
This is Larry Stafford again. I got cut off, so I'm gonna bring up my-
My name is Jennifer Acevedo, and I am a Royal Oak citizen and a member of the Royal Oak Environmental Advisory Club. With full support of the resolution acknowledging climate emergency and completing a greenhouse gas emissions inventory. The city commission mission statement reads, "Our mission is to provide a safe, healthy, and sustainable community." We won't be able to have that without taking action on this climate crisis before us. While there is an urgent need for a national strategy, there are also many steps we can take at the municipal level to reduce greenhouse gases. This needs to be a citywide, multi-department strategy that is led by the city manager, with goals, deadlines, and accountability to the commission and Royal Oak citizens. We can't just say we're going to do something. We've run out of time for that. We now have to do something. This resolution and commitment to reducing greenhouse gases is a good start, but we also must remember that we're already dealing with extreme precipitation events due to climate change. And while it's not a part of this specific resolution, it should always be at the top of mind for this commission and the planning commission when approving new projects and builds in our community. Better stormwater management in our city and region is desperately needed. Some of the changes needed for reducing greenhouse gases and better stormwater management may seem costly at first, but it's truly an investment in our future, and the cost of doing nothing is too great. Thank you.
This is Jamie Ackles calling, I just wanted to go on record in opposition of the marijuana stores along the Woodward corridor. You know, when we voted to legalize marijuana in Royal Oak, it wasn't, you know, approving distribution centers all along Woodward, even at four locations, even if there's just a couple on Woodward, it still detracts from the presentation of the Woodward corridor. We're trying to bring in good businesses that attract more good businesses and good consumers, and if somebody wants to buy marijuana, I'm sure that they could go to an industrial area of Royal Oak where we could have stores and distribution centers that wouldn't be along the corridor that represent Royal Oak. And so, I am opposed to it, and opposed to the fact that we have many parks, churches, schools along the Woodward corridor as well, and being in close distance to that is not good for anybody. So again, I just wanna call in and oppose any marijuana stores going along the Woodward corridor. Thank you.
Hi, this is Betty Verrill Small Murphy, I'm calling in regards to the meeting tonight. I'd like to know what the results were of the study that was done. Oh yeah, wait, you did no study on the variances, on how close these buildings can be to our homes, where we live with our children. I would appreciate you guys adjourning this issue now, because you are not, I feel like you are trying to slide stuff under the door without the citizens being involved. What is this with this map that's out there, that you guys are not even looking at or considering? Please, adjourn this issue now. Thank you.
My name is Joanne Berry. My husband Jim and I have lived in Royal Oak since 1991. We are very concerned about the proposed ordinance for commercial marijuana establishments so close to our residential areas, churches, and schools. We urge the city commissioners to consider classifying these establishments as adult businesses. Thank you.
My name is Amy, last name Yurich, U-T-Y-C-H. I'm against the rezoning of the marijuana. This should all be held in downtown areas where it can be supervised by the police and courthouse and the city officials. As it is, there's a pawn shop going in on Woodward and the old Army, Joe's Army Navy, which there was many comments against. That pot shop wants to be a sex-toothed pot shop. It's gonna devalue the property of our neighborhood. Not to mention, we have Upton Elementary, Shrine Academy, and our neighbors to the west of us, there's Greensville Elementary, all within a mile, mile and a half of where you're placing this. We also have many, many parks in Royal Oak, where I can see people using marijuana in our parks, Molden Park, Upton Park Place, Dundire, the park right up, the Normandy and Woodward, right by the church there, Fulton Park, Fife Park, Balvin Park, Memorial Park, and Anthers Park. Not to mention, we have Beaumont Healthcare System right on the corner of 13 Mile and Woodward. This would not be a place where I would ever put marijuana shop. The healthcare is against smoking. You know, this is marijuana. I understand that people voted yes, but again, it needs to be rebackzoned into the downtown area. Also, there's a manual baffle church there. This is going to devalue our property. We do not need traffic from Detroit to Pontiac, and all sorts of people coming up and down Woodward to visit local pot shops. I understand that you want them all located on Woodward, that is not the only place where Royal Oak, the whole community is. Again, I vigorously am opposed to putting any pot shops by any school whatsoever. They need to be securely located in the downtown area by the courthouse, by the police station, and by city hall. That way, they can be properly vetted and managed, and we certainly don't need 11 of them for the population. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Andrew Sarpolis. I live at 316 South Maple Avenue here in Royal Oak. I'm calling in tonight to leave a public comment and support of the resolution acknowledging the climate crisis and committing to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. I have a background working in climate policy. I've worked for the CR Club, one of the United States' largest environmental nonprofits, for just under seven years. I'm a member of the local underway peace climate justice committee. I'm currently an organizer as well with a countywide initiative called Turn Oakland County Green. While not an important member of the Royal Oak Environmental Advisory Board, I attend many of their meetings and was present at discussions over this resolution. So therefore, I've dealt with resolutions like this one a lot. I support the resolution tonight as it puts Royal Oak on the path to being a local leader in municipal climate policies. In my opinion, we have a moral duty to life on earth and to future generations. And we know that our federal and state governments are not currently up to the task of taking on the climate crisis. Perhaps soon that will change, but we cannot wait and hope for outside action. Already, we've lost valuable time since the IPCC released its influential report in 2018, telling us then that we had 12 years to make serious progress. Now just 10 years, and in that time, emissions have not reduced fast enough to meet our goals. Local action must take preeminence. Cities, townships, and local governments are our last hope in the fight for a livable future. And this resolution, unlike so many others being passed right now in Michigan, contain concrete steps to get us started. It's more than a statement of principles. It's a pathway to action. It's a good first step, and I'm really glad to see it come up for a vote. So thank you for your time and hopefully your support for our planet and its people.
My name is Judy Anne Sweeney, and I live at the Skylows at 100 West 5th, Unit 709. And I'm calling on behalf of all of the folks here in this building, about half that are 50 and over, senior citizens, also the folks in the pink building across from Main Street. I don't remember the name of that building, that are kind of stuck for this alternative arts pizza and eats, this music stage that'll be going on for four days. Big screen, lots of noise, and you know, we really, those of us that are here, we're kind of stuck. We can't really go anywhere to escape it, all the noise. There's really nowhere to go because of the situation with the COVID-19. So I just want to lodge that concern. I was thrilled when I saw that our speech and each was canceled. I thought that was a real smart thing to do. And then this alternative music venue came up, which is just a bad idea as far as the noise level. I mean, it's just too loud. Enough people, you know, people just cannot escape it of this particular age group this year because of the circumstance. So please consider that when you're voting on this. It would really be nice if you just leave it alone, let it go till next year. And we're all paying taxes around here, so please keep that in mind. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
My name is Dr. Tom Kopch, Normandy Clinic, Royal Oak, 32268 Woodward. I'm located just south of the Joe's Army Navy that was voted down and right by the Golden Basket where I hear they're trying to put in a cannabis store. So I was happy to hear about the pawn shop being voted down. Not too happy about the cannabis store even being considered just north of my building. I've been in practice for 28 years at this location. Grew up coming here as a young boy, still love what I do, still young enough to continue. And if you were in my shoes, a business owner at this location, I'm sure you wouldn't be too happy to have that next to you. We have ordinances, laws, and rules and setbacks for a reason. So I'm not even sure why I'm on the docket, as I've probably said before, and everybody quoted in the newspapers or this and that. And I've heard, because I'm not much of the guy to dig into it, but heard I'm getting slammed by the mayor for lying, I guess. But if it's going to happen, I think an industrial area would be a great location. I wouldn't be too happy with it being next to my building. I'm sure you wouldn't be either. Also, when I was approached by the commercial real estate guy to buy my building, it was no secret that Joe's Army Navy was going to be a jewelry slash pawn shop and the Golden Basket was going to be a cannabis store. So between the mayor's connections with these gentlemen, it's hard to believe that the mayor is saying he had no idea about the Golden Basket location for the cannabis store. So it's a shame I hear you slandering me and bad-mouthing me, but I'm a big boy and can deal with it. But I wish he would look in the mirror and tell the truth and just do the right thing. Like I said, we have laws, rules, and setbacks for a reason. So what's the reason to change them? And I know a lot of the residents behind me have been coming into my office complaining and would not be happy with it. So I'm not sure who would be happy with it, you know? Because Royal Oak is built upon, you know, businesses included, and residents, and schools, and churches, and whatnot. So like I said, not, you know, for recreational reasons, no. I mean, for pain and cancer and things like that, more power to it, but it could be an industrial area. So hopefully you take strong consideration. Would not be happy if it was next to me. I'm sure you wouldn't be either.
This is Jim Reed. The corner where the Golden Basket was, that should not be a distribution center. It is a residential area. You can't hide from that at all. Closer is a church across the street. It should be anywhere. It should be in the 14 Delmar area. If it should go for it, it would be further proof that the council people are not representing citizens of Royal Oak, rather than themselves, for whatever reason, they would choose to have a distribution center there.
Hi, my name is Kathy Enderjack. I'm the president of the Normandy Oaks Condominium Association. We are located on Benjamin Avenue, on the northwest corner at Normandy. I'm calling because we are having problems with golf balls coming from the Royal Oak Golf Course coming into our property. There are just missing people. My husband was barbecuing, and one went right by him into our bushes very fast, and it hit him. He would probably be hurt quite badly or possibly dead. We've had windows broken. I've filed police reports for the broken window with Officer Tyler Schneider of the Royal Oak Police Department. We've had them in our pool. They're hitting the siding. They are hitting people's cars. I have called and talked to Aaron Filipski at DPS, 520. I've also talked to John, the superintendent of recreation, on 521. John told me that there's no money in the budget to repair the net. There are posts up along the golf course property between them and us. There was a net there, and for the last four or five years, after a storm, it has all been torn to shreds and is just hanging there. Well, those posts and that net were put there for a purpose. We've talked to our condominium lawyers at Herbo Law, and it seems like the city is being negligent in providing coverage for our property, which is going to be a big liability, much more than the cost of a net if somebody gets hit by a golf ball. We have sent letters to the mayor. Jason Hughes is on my board. He has sent it to all of the city commission. We have had nothing done. This is ridiculous that people should have to live in fear of being hit by a golf ball. We've spent a million dollars redoing our parking lot in our carports, and golf balls are hitting the carports. Golf balls are everywhere. Everybody picks them up. We all have hundreds of golf balls. And it's not just someone standing up on the railroad tracks hitting golf balls like Joe at the Royal Oak Golf Course had said. It's because we run parallel to the third and fifth holes. And when someone drives their ball and if they fly, or I guess if they're left-handed, it wouldn't just fly like a hook or whatever, however that works, it comes our way, and it comes at a very fast speed. It had dented cars. The woman across the hall from me had a big dent put in the side of her pickup truck. We've had people have them hit- Hi. My message ran a little long.
My name is Marcia Tong. I live in the Royal Oak Beverly Hills Association area. I live behind Art Van across the Woodward from the Golden Basket, which I hear is going to be a marijuana store along with Joe's Army and Navy is going to be a pawn shop. These two businesses are only across the street of Woodward from a church and a park. I am concerned about paying high taxes and my property value going down. Marijuana sold along Woodward will cause many, many problems. I don't feel the commission has paid attention too well. All they're worried about is getting more money and money paybacks from the people who want to put these businesses on Woodward. There is plenty of places to put them in the industrial area. It will only cause more traffic, which there is plenty of traffic on Woodward. There's no place to park. The cruisers cause enough problem without adding marijuana and pawn shops, especially close to a church and a park. And also, behind the Golden Basket is another park, which is absolutely ridiculous to even think about putting it in that area. What are you people thinking? All you're thinking about is money. Be true to yourself. Have a heart, have a mind, have a soul. Thank you.
This is Jason Hughes. I live at the Normandy Oaks condo complex, the older one, not the new one, on Benjamin Avenue, along the railroad tracks and the remaining golf course in Royal Oak. I believe our board president has also left a message. I'm on the condo board as well. We've had an issue for several years now. The net that runs alongside the east side of the golf course came down several years ago in a windstorm, and it was never replaced. The poles are still there, but since then, we've gotten many more golf balls coming over that are getting hit across the railroad tracks and kind of presents a danger to people. We did have a window broken recently. A few cars have been hit, and people have been close to getting hit. We have left emails with the city and so forth concerning this, and we were told to file a police report over the broken window, which we did last week. So hopefully this can get taken care of before there's any more substantial property damage outside of a window or somebody gets hurt. Thank you for your time.
This is Victor Lousky commenting again on the marijuana items on the city agenda. Once again, we have not changed anything with regards to limiting the size or the actual number of marijuana operations in the city, which I think is absolutely ridiculous. Also, we have not clarified distancing and/or inability to appeal said distancing for an adult business. So we don't have people being able to shorten up the setbacks, et cetera, that are codified in the zoning requirements. And more importantly, there was a discussion last time that we were going to start out with four, but that's not going to be the end of it. We're going to see how this works out, and we're going to expand. I just have a question here, folks. Is that all Royal Oak can bring into this town is marijuana operations? Is that what you're trying to say, that the only way we can get any kind of retail at all, any kind of businesses at all, is to have, to expand the number of retail and grow operations in the city of Royal Oak? I find that absolutely incredible. We should be limiting the number of operations to make sure that we don't have any issues, that we have, you know, if people want it, it's available, but it doesn't become a large-scale operation in Royal Oak because of all the possible drawbacks thereof. And yet, we want to expand this stuff without limitation. It's ridiculous. I mean, if this is the only thing that our economic development guy who's being paid on the city payroll, plus the economic developer dollar the DDA can come up with, I think maybe we should just change plans here and get somebody in here who can think outside the box a little bit. Because this is ridiculous. No other retail except pot is not a way to secure additional revenues to this city. Thank you.
I'm calling about the marijuana-
This is Elizabeth Reed. I'm against putting any marijuana stores on Woodward Avenue. I have not seen any reason why the stores should be located at the north end, like Delmar and 14 Mile Roads. Putting any of the marijuana locate stores on Woodward, ready back up to residential areas and go against the current or existing zoning laws. And also, I read in the Royal Oak Tribune that there's no shot downtown due to St. Mary's School. So why is the Golden Basket location being considered? It is very close to Emmanuel Buffalo Church and also one of the premier parks in northwest Royal Oak. As a Royal Oak resident for over 30 years, I'm asking the commission to vote no. Thank you.
My name is Dave Grau. I'm a resident of Royal Oak and have been for 13 years. Today, I'm calling regarding the resolution acknowledging climate crisis and committing to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and that being on the city agenda. I have been following and supporting the Royal Oak Environmental Advisory Board, and I believe that the work that they're doing is good and needed, and that, I don't want to be negative, but I think that we are behind and that we need to fast-track all of these, anything that the advisory board is recommending to move forward and address climate change and the environment as quick as possible. My name is Dave Grau. I'm a resident of Royal Oak, I live at 129 Linden Avenue, and I'm calling to support the Royal Oak Environmental Advisory Board and their greenhouse gas emission agenda and their reducing that. Thank you.
My name is Ryan Ericak, and I live at 3915 Benjamin Avenue in Royal Oak. We are at the Normandy Oaks Apartments, the older buildings, which are on the other side of railroad tracks of the Royal Oak Golf Course. There are a lot of people here who are afraid to go outside in fear of getting hit by golf balls. Me being one of them, I've had two close calls this summer already alone. I was sitting on my patio on the south side of the building, and a golf ball on the fly came right into my hedges in front of me. Another day, I was working outside on my patio, and a golf ball on the fly again hit the side of my wife's SUV directly on the window. Luckily, it didn't break it. But talking to other residents, there are many people that have these kind of experiences. I alone- I alone personally have picked up over a hundred and fifty golf balls off our property already this year. Windows have been broken, cars have been hit. We hear them bouncing off our carport all the time. I know that when a golf ball leaves a club, it's traveling at about approximately a hundred miles an hour. You know, math people have to know that the speed that a golf ball comes down is equal to the speed that it leaves the golf club, which means it could potentially hit somebody at a hundred miles an hour. If that ball hit them in the head, there's a chance they wouldn't be around today. It's a very, very scary situation living over here. We've been here ten years and I know that they have a net that goes along the third hole fairway that keeps the golf ball back, but that net has been torn to shreds after a big storm approximately four or five years ago. I've been up there and I've seen. Many people have called. I know personally last year I talked to the city attorney. We've been promised over and over that this net would be repaired, but there's empty promises. We're very upset with the city neglect and the golf courses neglect and letting that net fall down. I've been up on the track and I've seen it laying there along the side of the track. That's a very, very sad situation and dangerous situation as I'm concerned. I know the officer was up there last week, he took pictures. He said, obviously that net is in bad shape and it's on the ground and it's not there doing the job that was set up to be. Obviously it was put there for a reason and it's not doing that job. Yeah, my name is Ryan Ericdack, resident of Normandy Oaks Apartments. We would really beg you for your help in this dangerous situation. We've had people thrown their swimming pool along the track. There are golf balls falling directly into the swimming pool. Yeah, thank God that no one got hit or seriously injured so far. Thank you.
This is David Elkes calling in regarding item number eleven on today's agenda. I'm not sure then for it or against it per se, but I am questioning, why is the, why are there limitations on locations for dispensaries that are different from limits on cigarettes or liquor sales? Thank you and good day.
My name is Tom Regan, R-E-G-A-N. I live at 3126 Windview and I was just calling to encourage you to vote yes on the resolution acknowledging the climate crisis and committing to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And I realize this will cost some tax dollars to implement, but I'm certainly willing to chip in. Thank you.
This is Erica Sykes, Lexington Boulevard. I'm calling tonight to implore you to do the right thing and establish setback requirements for marijuana facilities that will protect our Royal Oak neighborhoods, our children, and our property values. All of you have already publicly stated and acknowledged that the secondary effects of allowing these types of businesses to open in our community is an unknown. This was your reasoning for only allowing two pot business licenses to begin with at the last commission meeting. Yet the current zoning plan still allows for up to eighteen licenses to be awarded. How can you be so cavalier in your attitude and not institute some basic safeguards when people's home values and their quality of life is possibly in jeopardy if these types of businesses turn out to be more of a problem than you realized? Please utilize the setbacks that are already established in our adult business ordinance for marijuana establishments. Just as a starting point, doing so does not impede your current proposed plan in the very least. If these types of businesses turn out to not have a derelict effect, then look at modifying the setbacks or determining if they are even needed. By not instituting some control parameters that protect our neighborhoods, our children, and our property values, you are failing your duty as our elected officials. Why is it so hard for you to acknowledge that by establishing these basic setbacks, you can give the hundreds of residents who have called in expressing their concerns peace of mind and still get the two marijuana establishments that you have established that you want on Woodward? In my opinion, this is a win-win solution for both sides of the coin. Residents who don't think pot stores create any secondary negative effects still get access to buy pot along Woodward and residents like myself who are not as sure about the benefits of pot stores next to their homes and their kids can get some peace of mind that our children, quality of life, and property values are protected. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Boni and I'm a resident of Royal Oak, Michigan. I'd like to announce my support in the emissions reduction policy that is going over, going to be gone over today in your meeting. Thank you.
This is Amanda Gerbach. I'm calling in support of the resolution acknowledging the climate emergency and completing a greenhouse gas emissions inventory. With this resolution, the city will establish that there is a climate problem and collect the necessary baseline data to take a systematic approach to set evidence-based goals for a more resilient and sustainable community. As the resolution states, our community health and quality of life has been and will continue to be impacted by climate change. I fully support efforts and policies made by the city and commission such as this resolution addressing climate change and the community-wide sustainability plan. Thank you for prioritizing environmental sustainability and our health for the city's future.
Linda O'Shastain, Farnham. Never let this said that you guys are believers in transparency because what you're doing tonight seems pretty sneaky to me. If you weren't, you didn't include the map that Mr. Labassiere is asking to be put on the agenda. The map should be seen by everyone concerned with the marijuana issue. It's a simple map and it's straightforward and the public needs to see it. Two other things struck me at the end of the last meeting that I'd like to bring up. Please don't negate or dismiss what residents say at public comment and say that they were misinformed. It's kind of insulting. You know, we read, but we know what's going on and what we have to say should be heard without any criticism. I think we're actually being more misinformed, or I should say less informed tonight by the exclusion of the map. I was really disappointed to see the public veratement of Ms. Gibbs at the end of the meeting by her fellow commissioners. It was nasty and mean and I guess you'd call it bullying. It was like adult bullying. I don't know, it was just not nice, but I expect better behavior and some decorum from city commissioners. An apology will be issued. Thank you.
My name is John Glaucka. I'm calling in regards to the marijuana zoning ordinance. Now that you have details set in the second reading of the marijuana zoning ordinance, you should let the residents vote on. You should let residents that live within a thousand feet of any establishment to be involved in the approval process. I suggest to introduce language that requires you to gain the express permission of a majority of residents within property within a thousand feet of any marijuana establishment before bestowing approval for those businesses. I would also hope that the commission has calculated the extra security costs of Royal Oak Police to guard these businesses. Thank you.
This is Ronald Getler at 235 Orchard View Drive. I wrote a letter to each of you. I want to appeal to your moral senses that you do not allow the marijuana industry to take over Royal Oak. It's proven damage to youth, edibles resulting in higher doses now and more problems because they do not know how much it needs. They need to eat in order to receive what they believe to be the benefits and it is proven that you are depriving them later in life of an IQ of eight points less. You are delivering a blow to the schools of this city who are trying to do a good job in raising our children. And from here on, if you pass this, you can never honestly say that Royal Oak is good to raise a family. Don't ever say it again if you pass this.
My name is Kevin Riddle. I live at 3714 Kensington Drive. I am strongly opposed to granting licenses or accommodations to any of the marijuana businesses that the city council is looking at granting access to Royal Oak, including Woodward Avenue. We had a tough enough time getting the motels off of Woodward Avenue. Now we're looking at marijuana businesses, potentially pawn shops. No one is going to move to the city of Royal Oak as a resident because they want to be closer to a marijuana shop. As a matter of fact, families are more likely not to move to the city of Royal Oak because of proximity to a marijuana shop. So I would strongly recommend and suggest that the city council deny any future use of cities premises, the businesses or granting business licenses to marijuana shops seeking entry into the city of Royal Oak. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Byrd. I live in Royal Oak and have for the last thirty years. I'm a voting member, a homeowner, and I'd like to express my support for the climate emergency community while greenhouse gas assessment and reduction goal setting is crucial. I support its goals, believe its purpose is reasonable, and firmly, firmly, firmly support those in the council that also believe this. Thank you so much.
My name is Kostz Strzewa. I live on Thorncroft Street, north of Fourteen Mile and zip code 48073. I'm against any retail establishments for recreational marijuana. We have parks where children play. We have a vocational school where, you know, young people would be exposed to it and I think it's just a bad idea. I would suggest that you find some other place, preferably close to downtown, where much of the activity, I believe, in terms of people wanting recreational marijuana is concerned. We have too many families over here and it is not welcome north of Fourteen Mile between Crooks Road and Coolidge. Thank you for allowing my input and I await your decision. I know.
This is Asha Burke. I live in Royal Oak, I'm Robinburg, and I'm calling to ask that our city commissioner, officials, and mayor not vote to allow marijuana stores on Woodward. I have a concern of traffic. I have a concern that Woodward is lined by neighborhoods and it's just not the appropriate place. We need to put it in industrial area that we have in Royal Oak and it seems to be working in other cities. I really would appreciate if you would hold off on this issue until we can speak in person instead of that new meeting, than on the phone. But please vote against this tonight. I would really appreciate it that you listen to constituents in this issue. Thank you.
My name is Kena Hill and I live in Royal Oak, right at the corner of Dakota and Woodward area, and I am just calling in to voice my opposition to having any marijuana dispensaries in this neighborhood. We have small children, all of our neighbors are pretty much against having the retail establishments in our neighborhood, so I would like to make sure that's on record. If you have any questions, you can feel free to contact me, 810-923-9645. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kena Hill and I-
Hi, this is Doug Dash. I'm a resident of Normandy Oaks condominium. I'm also on the board of directors here. We've called the city several times this summer. We've had a net that's been down from the city-owned golf course, Royal Golf Course, for a couple of years. We've been trying to get it replaced. The pole's in there and netting is ripped. I have golf balls come over, they're coming right by my gas window on my patio. Not to mention that it almost hit my eighty-year-old neighbor and instead it hit the siding of our building. We've had windows broken. You know, this isn't neglect if you're not going to fix this. So there's going to be a liability here because a lot of people do walk and we have older people here. It doesn't matter if they're older or not. We let them go in the pool and everything else. And this is located on the south of Normandy on Benjamin. I've been there once, I've been here for twenty-five, oh, for twenty years. So I would appreciate if you would look into putting up a net. We've requested over the last couple of years and several times this year before someone really gets hurt because that's your liability. Thank you.
This is Woody Gontina at 1422 Edgewood Drive. I'm calling regarding the city commission meeting tonight, July 27th. Item number seven I on the consent agenda, the resolution acknowledging a climate crisis. I just wanted to call in and voice my support for the commission adopting this resolution. I think it's clear that we are in a crisis, an emergency situation with our climate and we need to bring as much attention to and acknowledge that change needs to occur as soon as possible. So I appreciate the city commission's time on this and would ask that they do adopt this resolution. Thank you.
My name is Albert Nesbit. I live at 3616 Yorba Linda Boulevard in Royal Oak. My comments are about the marijuana ordinance that's going to be voted on tonight. I listened to the justification that several council members stated last week during your council meeting that seventy percent of the residents voted to approve the marijuana state initiative. The residents voted to decriminalize marijuana. It's a really, really big leap for you guys to go from decriminalizing marijuana and us voting not to have our kids and grandkids have drug possession convictions to having retail establishments in our neighborhoods. Amendments about setbacks were proposed last meeting. I would urge you to adopt those setbacks. With all the comments made during the last two meetings and the votes that were cast last meeting, it has become very easy for me as a voter to know who I can vote for in the next election for city council because now I know who is going to support our neighborhoods. Thank you very much for your attention.
My name is Jerry Griffin. I'm calling on behalf of Inkana, a wholly Michigan-owned vertically integrated marijuana firm headquartered in Barmington Hills. I'm calling in opposition to the proposal to establish any buffers around churches and parks. We believe the city is designed to confine a small number of retail facilities to the Woodward corridor and industrial zone already serves as a buffer in moving these to the outer edges of the city. Also, Woodward Avenue with its numerous lanes and abundance of traffic already acts as a significant buffer from any use that sits opposite the other side of the street. One in the general business area in and of itself mitigates the proximity simply because there cannot be a proliferation of stores. Woodward is the main retail corridor. It lends itself to a diverse portfolio of commercial uses and always has. I would suggest that the parks and churches along Woodward and the patrons they serve have not suffered negatively from the current businesses located close by. Nor will they with a single facility being allowed. Lastly, I would ask, what public policy initiative is being advanced? What good or ill are we addressing by saying one location is bad because it is only two hundred and forty-nine feet away from a particular use and another is fine at being two hundred and fifty-one feet or one small step further away or at four hundred and ninety-nine feet versus five hundred and one feet? What is, what if one location should only be two hundred and twenty-five feet away and therefore not eligible, but also not visible from the buffered use and others two hundred and seventy-five feet distance away but clearly visible? Does visibility affect the supposed impact? Clear whatever the intended result of such language is illusory. I understand the concerns residents have simply because it is a new use- I understand the concerns residents have simply because it is a new use and it is fear of the unknown. There is perhaps a perception of what these facilities will look like, of whom they will attract. I would simply suggest you ask your neighboring communities in Oakland County that will allow these facilities. I see that they have had no issues with increased crime or traffic. You know, heavily regulated businesses that needed significant personal capitalization to license. It would simply be foolhardy not to operate these facilities in the most upright fashion and respecting the communities that allowed them in. We again would hope that you would reject the inclusion of the proposed church and park buffer, and thank you for your turn.
My name is Jeremy Marley. Star Road, four eight zero seven three, and I'm a lifelong resident of Royal Oak. Mr. Mayor and members of the city commission, I'm calling tonight to speak on and to encourage you to vote in favor of item number eleven on your agenda, the recreational marijuana licensing ordinance. Some people, including one of the members of your body, have tried to spread lies and misinformation that the introduction of a marijuana dispensary will increase crime rates in the area, but that's just not the case. Over a hundred studies have confirmed that opening of a dispensary has no impact on crime rates, or if it does, it's to decrease crime in surrounding areas. Thank you for not succumbing to the misinformation propagated by this member of your body and his shrinking band of friends in the Royal Oak area Republican Club. It's disgusting that the R O A R group would spread these lies and use scare tactics to attempt to gin up some sort of controversy and demonize a group of people for engaging in a perfectly lawful activity. These highly regulated businesses face an extreme level of government oversight. Not only will they help with the economic development of underutilized sections of our city, they'll add to the richness of the character of our community. Thank you for taking such a long, thoughtful, and deliberate approach to allowing a small number of dispensaries to operate in Royal Oak. Thank you for standing with the overwhelming majority, sixty-nine percent of us Royal Oakers who voted to allow illegal consumption of marijuana in our city.
This is Sarah Heiser. Excuse me. Four three one nine, Robinwood. I live three blocks from Woodward, Elmwood and Cooper and then Woodward. My question for you tonight, and I would like you, all of you, to answer this. What is your motivation for not listening to the people of Royal Oak? You have a study that shows you sixty-seven percent of the people do not want marijuana shops near residential areas. You have an industrial area available to you. If you build it, they will come. Believe me, they can find it if they want their marijuana shop. No other cities have it in residential areas that I know. Whether it's Ferndale, Ann Arbor, anywhere, they don't have it near the residential areas. Ferndale has so much traffic. Apparently, they have a giant parking lot that it wheedles all over the place, and sometimes police have to be called. But Ferndale put them in business districts, more industrial areas by railroad tracks. I do not understand your push to keep it there where you want it to be. Look, these neighborhoods back up all they have behind these businesses and their backyards is an alleyway, a short little alleyway, one and a half carwets wide. You want to have, make a marijuana stores behind somebody's little children's backyard where they're playing with an increased traffic volume that really should not be there. What, Mayor, what if you didn't live on Alexandria and you lived on Cooper? And your backyard backed up to an alley, and your little children played out in the backyard, and then you have all kinds of traffic out there? And possibly, I'm suggesting, with the amount of traffic that I realize has been going on in Ferndale, accidents. It's bad enough with Starbucks backing up. Then you want to have how many marijuana shops on Woodward with traffic backing up? It's not, it's a safety issue, too. It's really poor planning. It would be a stressor on the police department. It's a stressor on the neighborhoods. It's a stressor on the citizens of this city, the little children. I really want to know, why are you pushing for this? Who's buying these properties and putting marijuana shops in? You're going to get the same amount of tax resource whether it's in the industrial site or on Woodward. Take a minute.
This is Todd Uggich from Royal Oak. I'm calling on Pawn Shop, and I'm going in the Golden Basket on Woodward Avenue. I have a problem with that. One, you have a pawn shop going right across the street from this. I have a problem with that. That shouldn't have happened since I already called and did not want if you and city council were to choose this or let this citizen. Another thing, it's a name drag between Panya and Detroit already with trucks. We don't need any more trucks to our city. This will cause devaluation of our properties. Within that area, you have Upton Elementary, Shrine Academy and High School. Parks, you got Upton Park Place, you got Glen Stayer Park, you got Park of Normandy, you got Fulton Park, Fife Park, Sullivan Park, Memorial Park, Amherst. Right down the street, you have Beaumont Healthcare, which doesn't make sense that you're going to have pot smoking within the city, but they won't even let people smoke on the property of Beaumont, which should tell you something. Plus, right across the street, you do have Emmanuel Buffle Church. Not too far down there, a few more miles, is Shrine Church, and not too far away from that is Clinton Martin and Beth Radio. So I'd like you guys to listen to the citizens and vote against the pot fights. Thank you.
This is Mary Beth Harrison. I live at four two six one Cooper. I'm calling in reference to your, the meeting, the subject of the meeting this evening, which once again have been put at the end of your meeting. You feel that so many other things are more important than this, and the longer your meetings go, the more people will get tired and distracted and won't watch who is doing who well. Believe me, I plan to watch the whole thing as boring as it may be, and I'm sure many others will as well. After seeing this map that Randy Lavassar put on social media, there's no reason why these have to be in the Woodward corridor. These can absolutely be in the industrial area, and they can be downtown. I know that Tim Wang said that it was too close to Saint Mary's School. I am a member of Saint Mary's parish, and believe me, I have a vested interest. I wouldn't want anything happening to the children or the church. But if you, you can even use a simple thing like Google Maps, and you will find that some of, not all, but a good majority of the empty businesses in downtown, too, that are on either side of the FedEx on Main Street are well over a thousand feet away from the church or the school and, and Saint Peter's for that matter as well. So the fact that they're, I'm sorry, Tim, you are way off base there because they are well, well over a thousand feet from both of those churches and both of those schools. There are places downtown, and frankly, we have so many empty ones. Unfortunately, I think that's the business climate now, but we have so many empty places downtown. Put one down there. What is the reason, other than what you said about Saint Mary's, which is not true, then there's some other reason? And because you're not telling us, we have no choice but to think it's a nefarious one. There's just no reason. There, we are, you know, if you saw Randy's post, you would see that a young man, he sounded a lot younger than me, he's for pot, and that's fine. And he works in Hazel Park. He said he works across the street from one of the dispensaries, and every Saturday night and some Friday nights, the traffic is so bad between, on that location at Ten and a Half in Hilton, they have to call in Hazel Park Police to direct traffic. Now, some idiot okayed at Starbucks on Woodward. I've seen two accidents there already, and I hardly drive around there. That's, that's a death waiting to happen. So we're going to have this kind of traffic on Woodward? We're going to have all the little Birmingham Brett coming down here to buy their pot? Huh? Oh, I'm sorry, is that race fading? Anyway, come on, you know you can put it there, and you're just changing the zone and rough to meet your own needs. This is Mary Beth Harrison.
Good evening. Another joke about to happen here. Commission majority, and it would seem the new city manager, who was probably chosen as a flunky, does that publish information provided by Commissioner Lavassar? Need a vote to share information with your constituents? Why? More the same corruption as do as we say, not as we do? Cut that off with the mayor blatantly, well, let's put it this way. Either blatantly incompetent or just a skilled narcissistic liar, neither is good, at the last city commission meeting says that he had never heard about the Golden Basket, all news to him, which means he was either asleep at the wheel or not paying attention during all the previous planning commission meetings, or the Golden Basket was mentioned over a dozen times in each bite of that apple, which was a two-part meeting. So which was it? Just stupid or doesn't care? Neither is good. But tonight, you're going to go ahead and move forward after hundreds of public comment not in favor of what you're trying to do. No one's asking you to not approve marijuana dispensaries. They're just asking you to protect their property value, their neighborhood, and their families. But you will once again move forward of blatant disregard. You referenced this survey that went out to three thousand adult residents, about six percent of the adult population of Royal Oak, to which you received under twelve hundred responses. That's roughly two, a little better than two percent. Thirty-three percent yes, thirty-four percent yes with limitations, and thirty percent no. But yet, you say you have overwhelming support for what you're about to do. You're counting support that you're claiming, especially by residents whose neighborhoods are in the vicinity of Woodward corridor. No time for useless resolutions and proclamations. No good type stuff, but no time to share publicly available information that you should be presenting to your constituents, no time to conduct studies, no time to back your own police or fire department with a proper resolution, just time for more crookedness, as always. And the looks on your faces say it all. We're about tired with all this stuff. All you need to do is put the adult ordinance in effect, look at the industrial areas, and reclassify this. But you move forward and remember, everybody's watching, and hopefully, everybody outside the city, like the federal agencies, because all this is just attributed to your donors and increasing your donor factor. Have a great evening.
Mayor Poyet and Mayor of the City Commission, that concludes tonight's public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger, and thank you to everyone who called in to express their thoughts on a myriad of topics. You know, there's a lot that we have to discuss here tonight. It still seems that there is some information incorrect, misinformation percolating out there in the community. We hope to, once again, try to clear that up when we discuss these items. And, you know, I just have to say, I appreciate everyone expressing their concerns, and, you know, to some extent, you know, sometimes I think when topics get heated, you know, I guess, you know, there is some disappointment among myself anyhow with some of the statements made, some of the insults and baseless accusations thrown at this volunteer committee. And I think as a community, we're better than that. We don't need to have veiled racial statements. We don't need to have accusations against our neighbors. You know, there's been twenty-one public meetings, including tonight, on this topic, and we have a bromi.gov, lots of information out there to look at the minutes and really, you know, have a discussion as a community about the facts and about the discussion at hand. And I think, you know, if we're truly looking to serve each other and our neighbors, I think bearing false witness against each other isn't, you know, a good starting point. So I just ask, as much as we are emotional about any given topic, that we do our best to make informed decisions here, and as a community, we're making the decision together, and that we try to stick to the topic at hand and not, you know, get carried away. With that, I will move to topic number six, which is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone wish to make a motion on the approval of the agenda this evening? Commissioner Perush?
I'm going to approve the agenda with an addition of one item. The addition would be a brief discussion about the golf net on the east side of Normandy Oaks condominiums, between the condominiums and the Royal Golf Course. I believe Mr. Filipski is here with us this evening. If he's not, then we can put this off to another evening. But if he's here, I would just like to, there he is. I would just like to get his comments about this, if he is interested. That's my question.
Motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Okay, discussion on this topic. All right, with none, I'm going to call for the vote. I'm going to start with Commissioner Douglas.
I.
Commissioner Dubach.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavassar.
Yeah.
Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, all right, we have an agenda. So we will add to the end a quick and brief discussion on the netting for our Royal Golf Course and the affected condominiums. That brings us to item seven, the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda for further discussion? Commissioner Dubach.
Mayor, I'd like to remove item I, resolution acknowledging climate crisis.
Letter I, okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Lavassar?
I would like to remove items J and K.
J, K. All right, anybody else? All right, we have a consent agenda, which now consists of city commission meeting minutes July thirteenth, twenty twenty, claims for July sixteenth, July seventeenth, July twentieth, and July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, approval of purchase orders, approval of high-intensity drug trafficking area sub-recipient agreement, approval of move management services contracts, award of contract S two thousand and one, twenty twenty sewer televising and root treatment, award of contract S two thousand and two, twenty twenty sewer lining improvements, award of professional engineering services, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four asphalt resurfacing improvements, approval of administrative rule changes for executive department heads, and receiving file the following non-action items of March twenty twenty revenue and expenditure summary variance report in the twenty twenty second quarter training evaluation forms. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Perush. We have a second by Commissioner Dubach. All right, discussion on the consent agenda as presented. Okay, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs.
Yes.
Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavassar.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that brings us to item I, which was pulled off, resolution acknowledging climate crisis and committing to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Commissioner Dubach.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, you know, wanted to bring attention to this item. We did have a few people call in on it. I know that the Environmental Advisory Board has put a lot of work in bringing this forward to us, and I do want to, you know, I won't read the entire resolution. Hopefully, y'all have had time to take a look at it. It lays out the strong case for the climate crisis we're in and that we have to take action at a local level to do our part. I know most of us at this table have been committed to that and made it, you know, been working to make this a growing priority in the city. So I did just want to bring attention to the resolved portion of this resolution that's been recommended by the Environmental Advisory Board. So we know that, you know, we are in fact committing to action as a city with supporting the Environmental Advisory Board and staff. So, you know, via further resolve, the city commission commits to a citywide climate action effort to reduce municipal, community GHG emissions through energy waste reduction and other initiatives. Via further resolve, the city commission directs the city manager, directs the city manager to facilitate the immediate development of a GHG emissions inventory to set a baseline by September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Via further- Be a further resolve, the city commission directs the city manager to facilitate in collaboration with staff and other essential stakeholders. The development of GHG emission reduction targets for 2030 and 2050. Within 90 days after the GHG inventory baseline is set. These reduction, that reduction targets will guide the city's climate action goals within the sustainability plan. Be a further resolve, the city commission directs the city manager in collaboration with staff and other essential stakeholders beginning in 2025 and continuing in five year intervals to update the GHG emissions inventory and review and consider recommending changes to the goals established for 2030 and 2050. Those goals remain in alignment with ongoing updates to scientific findings regarding climate change. Be a further resolve, the city of Royal Oak is further committed to sharing experiences and best practices with other communities and currently participates as a member of the Michigan Greens Community, Green Communities Urban Sustainability Directors Network, U.S. Green Building Council Lead for Cities, Climate Mayors and the U.S. Conference of Mayors. And be a finally resolved, Royal Oak will engage with partners to collaborate, other community, collaborate with the community about the urgent need for climate change in order to help inspire and encourage individual climate action efforts at the local, state, national and global levels to provide maximum protection for all people and species of the world. Yes, I thought it was worth raising, so we all knew exactly what we're voting on. We are, we are committing to taking action in the city. I think it's meaningful. I think it's important and I commend, you know, Amanda Herzog, who chairs the environmental advisory board and all the folks who work diligently and are passionate about this issue. And everyone that called in and I'm really pleased to see us putting some commitment on paper. And I am enthusiastically move for adoption of the resolution.
We have a motion by, and we have a second by Commissioner Douglas. All right, discussion. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I just add, I represent the commission on the environmental advisory board and a lot of background work has gone into this. And I would just like to congratulate and thank the extremely knowledgeable committee members that we have there. And Julie Lyons-Bricker, who's our staff, in addition to our grant coordinator, is also our energy and sustainability manager. And she put a lot of work into this and a lot of her work will come out of this because it falls into her department. So, you know, Bravo, all on the environmental advisory board.
Anybody else? Yeah, I'll just add my gratitude to Julie Lyons-Bricker. I mean, she's been on point as a staff member, really helping push this important initiative, initiatives related to both climate change and other environmental strategies that our city should, must and need to adopt. Not just in the capacity of finding grants, but really making sure we stay on top of this as we should. And I'd also like to offer my gratitude to Dr. Herzog and the environmental advisory committee for all the work that they've done. We have a true group of community volunteers here that are just as passionate about, you know, making meaningful change in this community and to set the bar and to set the example for other communities to abide by. So, you know, we leave this earth a little bit better than we received it at least here in our four corners of Royal Oak. So thank you very much. It takes an entire group of people to get this done. I think in advance, city manager break for his execution and leadership when this resolution, I assume that will be passed. All right, any other discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. I'm going to start with Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavassar.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gibbs.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Dubak, for bringing that off the consent agenda. I think it was very important that, you know, for the folks watching, to have an understanding of some of the strategic initiatives that we're continuing to push forward. Commissioner Lavassar pulled off J and K. We'll start with J, request to fill assistant senior center coordinator position. Commissioner Lavassar?
Yes, this is a position that the annual cost to our city is more in the $50,000 to $60,000 range. And it's being presented to us a new position at a time when we are facing some significant budgetary issues. We're also, it's being proposed to us at a time when our senior center is not currently functioning at capacity or full capacity. I think the timing of this proposal simply is off. I'd like to see us do some more to bring our budget into line before we contemplate adding another position.
Anybody else? Commissioner Douglas.
Mr. Filipski, is this a position budgeted?
Yes, it is. Yep, it was part of the budget process. We had some discussion about it, some give and take, and yeah, it made the cut.
So we approved a budget. We spent a great deal of time really narrowly examining our personnel needs. We did ask a number of departments to delay some hires. But this is not one of the ones that we voted to delay when we approved the budget. I would further say that, that given the work the city is trying to do to make sure it addresses the needs of our aging population, to not fill this position would be disrespectful to the people who rely on the senior center services. There's also a mention here about the department succession plan. I think we need to have people in place looking ahead as perhaps existing staff people move on. And I will absolutely support this motion.
Thank you. Macy and then Commissioner Perush.
Yeah, so I'm following up on what Commissioner Douglas said. This didn't come up at the budget meetings and I advocated for this to be a position that we did feel fill right away. This position is one, there's only one full time staff at the senior center and there has been for some time. This would make that two. And this is also, we're hoping to fill it in with someone who's able to kind of expand the services during these rather uncertain times. Right now, as Commissioner Lavassar pointed out, the senior center isn't even open. So getting those services to seniors is more of a challenge and we're looking to have this be someone who's able to expand those services. In addition, as Commissioner Douglas pointed out, this is part of the succession plan and it's not staff people, it's staff person. So right now we've got one. She's been there for some time, does a great job with the senior center and she's looking for someone to support her. And I think this is a great, this is a great addition to our community and I will be supporting it.
Commissioner Perush and then Commissioner Dubak.
First of all, I think that, given the fact that we have such a large aging population within our community and it's getting bigger by the day, not smaller. I think it's just unbelievable that we were able to provide the kinds of services that we do in our senior center with only one full time staff person. I think that's amazing. The fact that we don't have a backup for her is scary. Anything could happen. She could decide to retire. She could, whatever might happen. But in other words, because we don't have a backup, it really, really jeopardizes the continuity of those services which seniors rely on, not having a backup in place. The second thing that I want to point out is that we did approve this in our budget. And if you look at the budget document, it says the overall temporary wages are decreasing in this year's budget by approximately $47,500 relative to the fiscal year this year. Original budget due to the change noted above, which is the hiring of a full time person in this position. And to better reflect actual time charged by the staff based upon prior years and a reduction in the part time wages. So this is offset by eliminating the part time wages element that is in this prior year's budget and substituting them with a full time person. So when Commissioner Lavassar mentions a budget amount of so much for the staff salary and benefits for this individual, you have to take into account that that is being offset by the elimination of the part time wages that were in the budget this year. So it's not that full total amount. So for this reason, I'm going to be voting for this resolution.
Commissioner Dubak.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a motion on the table? I don't believe there is.
I don't. No.
So yeah, I support the Comms Commissioner Douglas and Macy and Perush. We budgeted for this position. We actually had told staff to go back and double check on where to make cuts. This is something that after that, we still decide to invest in. We're all aware of our rapidly growing senior population. So to start belt tightening by shortchanging senior services seems like a flawed approach out of the gate. And we know this is something we need to be increasing investment in and finding ways to pay for them. This doesn't even need to be found, as Commissioner Perush explained, it's already budgeted for and has minimal impact on the budget. So I will move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. Yeah, I'll just add and echo the comments all of my colleagues have made. Went back and we looked at making other preemptive cuts in these uncertain times. And collectively, almost all of us, with the exception of a couple, may have decided that certainly we're not going to, you know, we're going to invest in our seniors, not take away from them, especially in a time where they are most vulnerable. And they need different and more types of services more than ever now. And so I think this is absolutely the right place where we need to put some investment, given today's times and given the impact COVID-19 has had on our aging community. So I will 100% be supporting it. So I'm going to call for the vote. I'm going to start with Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs.
No.
Commissioner Lavassar.
No.
Commissioner Dubak.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. All right, that brings us to item K, which is the acceptance of the Ralph C. Wilson Legacy Fund Grant. Arboretum Accessibility Improvements. Commissioner Lavassar.
Somewhat similar to my comments on the last issue, we have significant budget issues. A potential shortfall of, if I recall correctly, somewhere in the ballpark of $3 million this, this coming year, this year. And even with the cuts that we already adopted in the initial proposed budget, we still have some significant work to do and we just haven't done anything further since budget season. It's not a good time to be spending these, this funds here. And this is more than what we anticipated initially when we had a discussion on this topic. So I would like to first ask staff what deadline we are under to adopt this resolution and accept this grant. And depending upon that, it may warrant putting that decision off so we can reexamine our budget a little bit more. Find some additional savings and alleviate some of the significant concerns we have budgetarily.
So if I like to answer the question, Mayor Fournier. Yeah, there is, there is a bit of a deadline on this. As I understand it, and I have to look back at my notes, it would be either this meeting or the next meeting that we'd have to consider it before we'd sort of notice back to the, to the organization that we wouldn't be able to take on the grant. And they sort of understand, given the situation. So to answer your question, yeah, it is somewhat time limited for this particular grant.
Commissioner Macy.
I tend to agree with Commissioner Lavassar on this one, although it breaks my heart because I'd love to see this there. I think we needed there. I think we really want it there. But it's not budgeted and it's a lot of money to be spending when our budget is uncertain.
Anybody else? Commissioner Dubak.
So am I, I'm understanding this correctly, right, that we're, these are grant funds that we're also putting money in to establish universal design and accessibility?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'd be like similar to the previous item. This is about meeting the needs of our growing senior population. I'm not understanding why this is where we would begin with cuts.
Commissioner Macy.
Because in this case, it's not a cut, it's an addition. Also, this is, you know, this was planned and then conceived in the back when we really didn't have any of these type of paths, the ADA pass that we could have in any green space in our city. We are adding them to Normandy Oaks, which is under construction and should be finished by the end of the year. So we will have, this will be done. There are other grants out there, so we had hoped to get one that was bigger than this that we didn't get. So this is a smaller grant that we had anticipated. I'm really glad we got it. I think any other time I would want to do this. I just, I think, I mean, my $90,000 is a lot of money to be spending on something that we're already putting in in another park this year, in my mind.
If I may, Mayor Fournier. Just one more detail I should add, not that it really swings in any one way or the other, it doesn't make a difference on the financials. But today we just got confirmation from the Nature Society that they would donate $5,000 to this project. That said, I'm sure they'll hold on to that money and if we have another opportunity in the future, would help us with that as well. I just wanted to make you aware of it, that it had their support. And as I noted in the, the report, we'll, we'll keep our eyes open for, for other opportunities as well.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, again, I feel bad for our grant writer, Ms. Lyons-Bricker, who went to the mats on this and brought the money in. And I might ordinarily make a case for going ahead with a project, but I give a lot of weight to Commissioner Macy's opinion. She serves on the Parks, Rec and Seniors Board. If it, if it, you know, kills her to not be able to go forward with this project, but she's willing to forego it. I'm going to support her on that.
Commissioner Dubak.
Are we talking about foregoing this project? Are we talking about simply delaying it until after we have a better view to what the state budget and revenue sharing looks like?
Well, I, it depends on how, maybe I'll ask Mr. Filipski, how, how long will that grant stay available?
We would have to serve them notice relatively soon, whether or not it was approved. As I said, like in the next couple of city commission meetings within that timeframe. So yeah, time is of the essence, but the project itself, I mean, if that's still the, the will of the commission, we'll keep our eyes out for, for that particular project. And there, there may be other ways that we can, we can fund it. So. Sorry.
Mayor, if I may, you know, foundations are, you know, composed of kind people. It is entirely possible that while we may not be able to accept this grant this year, they would be open to considering a similar grant in a subsequent funding year when we've got the money to match it.
Anybody else? I'll just add one thing to be cognizant of, presuming that these grant funds will be available in subsequent years or down the road is something that we need to consider. It's a sizable match. You know, that the, that the grant is willing to cover. So, you know, as we see state budgets eroding in the next year due to COVID, certainly they may be rebound in a couple of years and we'll get over this and we'll have vaccines and we'll get back to a new normal here in a year or two, however long it takes. It's not forever. You know, God forbid, but, you know, keep in mind that, you know, the price tag, the interest rate on this, if we don't do it and then decide to do it later and we don't have grant funds, could be $35,000 or $40,000 if you count the other $5,000 kick in from the Nature Society, which is a significant portion of the funding. So, you know, a bird in the hand versus two in the bush, that's something I'd ask my colleagues to consider. Commissioner Perush.
Um. I feel badly too, that it looks like we're going to turn down this, this particular grant. Just because it's not for the slash pad or it's not for, you know, a restroom facility. It's, it's for specifically for facilities within the park that will assist people with disabilities. Which is something that we worked very, very hard and that the Parks Committee that developed this plan originally worked very hard to include into this plan. If it were something a little bit more, you know, not quite as, as socially responsible as, as these facilities for people with disabilities, I guess I wouldn't feel quite so bad about it. But I, I, I'm, I'm really hesitant to turn this down because we really pretty much promised the disability community that we were going to provide facilities for them in this park. And this is going to delay our ability to do that. I know the budget constraints. I know the amount of money is a significant amount. But I, I'm looking back to the discussions that everyone had about those issues when the park plan was being developed. And I, I just can't help but think that we're going to be shortchanging them a little bit by turning this down.
And Commissioner Perush brings up a good point about our commitment to inclusion. Certainly I would be on the same page if this were, I mean, another play structure or something that, you know, was more universal. But, you know, for a lot of decades, you know, the city had pretty much a pause on, on the necessary things that we needed to do to make sure this community was inclusive for everyone. I think we've made some good strides with a lot of our playground equipment and getting swings and other inclusive equipment. And I think this really adds to the fabric and, and, you know, we can always say it's never a good time. But, you know, as a fundamental, you know, value, how does that resonate with, you know, our decision here tonight on this grant? I think that we'll. I think that we'll have, through the budget process again, other opportunities to cut back. Again, I don't know if this is one of the areas that we want to cut back. I mean, how long do people who need to feel a little bit more included in our community have to wait to get things like this put into place? I appreciate everyone's opinion, but I'm just, that's where my head's at. Commissioner Macy?
So they don't have to wait because when this was planned, we had no other place, space like this in the city, but now we will at the end of this year. So the idea behind this was to get these paths at the senior center, which at the moment isn't even open, so has a lot less traffic than it often does. And instead, we're going to be having one, we're be having this in Normandy Oaks, which we weren't sure we were going to be able to fund fully in this first, in this first phase, but we are. So I absolutely understand what you're saying and that inclusion is a value, a strong value to this city. And I'm just, I'm just saying that we are in fact providing this this year, when we didn't think we were going to be able to. And these funds, I mean, you say it's a significant fund, but it is one quarter of the overall project cost. It's, there could be other funds out there. There was another grant we were seeking that was larger than this. I think we will have other opportunities in the future to follow through on this promise. I don't think we're forgetting about it or shoving it aside. I think we're being smart in light of what we're, the situation we're in right now.
Another discussion? All right, we'll call for the vote.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, yeah, we do. No, we don't have a motion, do we? Is somebody willing to make a motion? Nobody's willing to make a motion to move forward with this? Oh, we have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Dubach. Okay, discussion.
Uh, what, what, do you know what my motion is?
Oh, no, I don't. That's a great point. I presumed it was to move this forward, but I will. Commissioner Douglas, what's your motion?
Uh, my motion is to not accept the grant and to delay the project.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Gibbs. Okay, discussion. Discussion. Okay, I will call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Prush.
No.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
No.
Commissioner Levaser?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
And I vote no. The motion passes. It looks like to a four to three vote. And so it looks like unfortunately this will be delayed, in my opinion. And we will, I imagine, see it again on the, on the agenda sometime in the future. Who knows when, but we will, I suppose. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Filipski, for your contributions. That brings us to item eight, which is the Michigan Liquor Control Commission License Establishment, 515 Restaurant Group LLC, request to approval of plan of operation, entertainment permit agreement and dance permit. I don't see Lieutenant Spencer. Do I see Chief O'Donoghue here?
Uh, yes, sir, I'm here.
Oh, there he is. Okay, wow, you got the fancy background there.
Sorry. I can't do it in the house. It's too loud in there, so.
Mayor City- You're laying down law and order in your house there, Corey.
Mayor City Commission, we do have a request to change the plan of operation and transfer of ownership of, this is for Prano. The Royal Oak Police Department has received a request from 515 Restaurant Group LLC to transfer the Class C liquor license with, with the permits from CTP Hospitality Holdings, which is Prano, located at 600 and 610 South Washington. Additionally, 515 Restaurant Group is requesting to change the plan of operation to increase the dates of live entertainment from Thursday through Saturday to Tuesday through Saturday. If approved, the applicants will be doing business as 515's Kitchen and also Prano. 515 is owned and, owned by Gary Baglio, William Zip and Robert Gerwotowski. 515 is intending to purchase the business and inventory and, and permits for $200,000. The purchase would be financed through a loan through, from BG Media Entertainment. Uh, I'm, I'm very sorry, can you hold on just a moment? I'm sorry. Let me get my place here. The buildings, which are owned by 600 Washington LLC, 515 will lease the property and you'd be using business proceeds, starting at $15,000 per month. None of the applicants have owned an LCC establishment, but Mr. Baglio and Mr. Zip have owned BG Media, which is 515, since 2007 and have been directly involved with Prano for the last two years. The applicants have hired Carmen Young as general manager to run the day-to-day operations with Mr. Baglio. Ms. Young has over 35 years' experience in the restaurant and bar industry and has worked at Prano's and O'Toole's. If, if approved, the applicants will, for the most part, leave everything the same. 515's Kitchen will incorporate the restaurant area while the established establishment, while Prano will remain the bar area and dance floor. The applicants, as stated previously, are requesting to change the plan of operation to reflect additional days of live entertainment. There'll be no change in the interior, the seating, food, alcohol sales will, is expected to remain at 80% food, 20% alcohol sales. Since January of 2019, we've had 17 calls to this establishment. Five were related to the alcohol, were alcohol-related. As of July 17th, the MLCC has not approved the ownership transfer. Currently, the MLCC will approve them, not the city commission, but the city commission can provide input. The applicants have agreed to and have signed a dance and entertainment permit. The police department has no objection to this transfer of ownership or the request to change the plan of operation. If approved, the applicants will have to comply with all planning, zoning and building requirements and restrictions.
Questions for the chief? Any questions for the chief? I do see 515, I assume that's Mr. Baglio online. Mr. Baglio, do you wish to contribute any additional details or any other information about your intentions, plans, et cetera?
Hi, everybody. If, I'm here to answer questions if you've got any. I think most of you are familiar with what we do. We're looking at this opportunity to expand some of our entertainment and take advantage of the enormous outdoor space at the property to hopefully bring some of our, our audiences back with an extra layer of comfort.
Thank you, Mr. Baglio. Any questions, Commissioner Macy?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Baglio, so you mentioned the outdoor space. Is this something that you planned post-COVID or had this been in the works already?
It's kind of a double-edged sword. We were working on this before COVID, but the property has a lot of opportunities post-COVID and we're looking to take advantage of a lot of that.
I see Commissioner Gibbs and then Commissioner Prush.
Yes, um, Mr. Baglio, are you still going to do Drake Queen Bingo?
Yes.
I have yet to get there for a Drake Queen Bingo, so I-
You're the one. We're currently doing shows, although much, much smaller.
Okay.
And there's been some hesitancy from our audiences. And we're, we're confident that possibly bringing them outside for earlier shows will add an extra layer of comfort.
Well, I look forward to having, to attending one of these new shows in the new atmosphere. Thank you.
Commissioner Prush?
Commissioner Gibbs, you're not the only one. I haven't attended either. Even though they're fantastic, we just haven't had an opportunity to take advantage of them. But, Mr. Baglio, I have a question about the way the facilities are currently set up. There is the portion of the property which used to be the store, which is now your entertainment area. And then there is the bar area. And then there is frontal on the end, which is the restaurant. Is that space set up, if going to stay essentially the same for the interior operations?
Yes.
Okay.
So there, there is a door that we share between our 515 and the bar area, but we're going to basically leave the footprint the same. We're going to, we're going to give it a facelift. And we're going to use this time, hopefully it'll be a short COVID time, but we're going to use the time to make some modifications, some improvements and some menu changes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Baglio? I see Commissioner Douglas.
Mr. Baglio, do you anticipate making any changes on the restaurant side of the business in configuration or food?
Food, yes. Configuration, no, not in the immediate future. Over, over the next 18 months, yes, we will be doing some, some modifications. We're not going to be knocking down walls or anything like that. But you'll see, you'll, you'll see some upgrades. 515 has a, a unique aesthetic. I'm sure all of you have been there and know we have that 50s, 60s vibe, mid-century thing going on. And we're going to, we're going to move that throughout the space.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Baglio? Any additional questions for the chief? Any motions, discussion? Whoa. Commissioner Macy, I think, there very quickly. Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I'll move approval of this and say I had my 40th birthday party there and I'm looking forward to having my 41st. I hope it's, I hope it's able to be done in January.
Commissioner Macy, you're 40? Oh, my goodness. I would have never guessed. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? I see a second. I think Commissioner Dubach. All right, discussion. We'll go with Commissioner Douglas and then Commissioner Dubach.
Yeah. Who would have thought that an entertainment event called Drag Queen Bingo could put a city on the map like Drag Queen Bingo has done for Royal Oak? I might hats off to Mr. Baglio. He's deeply involved in the community in the downtown. He's generous with charitable organizations and he's really invented a phenomenon. And I'm confident that he'll bring that same level of artistry and commitment and integrity to his new endeavor.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dubach?
Uh, yeah, I agree. Now, Mr. Baglio is an exceptional operator and he provides a uniquely Royal Oak experience that I think our downtown is unknown for. And the fact that he's been doing it for so long and so well and has absolutely no objections from the police department, I think this is a no-brainer. So, I hope it's a big win for you, Mr. Baglio.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, I'll just add that I'm confused because I thought Commissioner Macy, when we were there, said it was her birthday for a percentage coupon off at the retail shop. I didn't know it was really her birthday. Wow. Commissioner Macy, I would have, would have, uh, but in seriousness, I think, Mr. Baglio, you and your crew there run a top-notch organization, is fun and engaging and is exciting. And what a good time your customers have. We know the professionalism that has to go into running an operation like that. And we know the, the hard work and dedication that you put into it personally to make it work and run well and keep it, you know, just a wonderful attribute in our community. And so, I don't know, I'm not counting votes right now, but I have a feeling it's going to go in a positive way. And so I do wish you the best of luck and look forward to, you know, seeing an expanded venue at 515. So, all right, with that, I'm going to call for the vote. I'll start with Commissioner Gibbs.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yeah.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. Mr. Baglio, yeah, Miss Bo, all the confidence in the world, so, you know.
Thank you so much.
All right, take care. All right, that brings us to item number 10 on tonight's agenda, which is authorize staff to negotiate an alternative, oh, whoops, we're on item number nine, aren't we? My mistake. Uh, which is to authorize modifications to the Rockin' Rides Festival Agreement. I believe, Mr. Brake, this is yours?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mayor. It's indicated in the report that the proprietor of the Rockin' Rides Festival is looking at canceling this year's event. This is part of a two-year agreement. And what, what they are proposing is what would have been held September of this year would be extended into 2022. So that asking your permission to authorize the city attorney to modify the agreement and to bring back, starting in 2021 and 2022, for the second year of the agreement. This is a third-party agreement that involves the Downtown Development Authority and they would need to approve this as well. Then finally gives authorization to the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement. And I believe Mr. Witz is available and can speak to this if there's any individual questions and certainly on the following agenda item as well.
Questions for Mr. Brake? Commissioner Dubach?
This seems pretty straightforward. We're just punting a festival we already agreed to to next year to get us past the crisis, hopefully. And if for some reason we're not, we'll talk about that then.
Correct.
I'll move verbal.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Dubach. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. Yeah, I'll just echo, it's pretty straightforward, makes sense. Whole world's going on pause right now with COVID and seems reasonable and responsible to do it. So, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Levaser.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yeah.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. All right, so that moves us to item 10, which is authorize staff to negotiate an alternative festival agreement proposed by Jonathan Witz and Associates. Mr. Brake?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So similar to the previous request, this is in consideration of the announcement that was made by the Arts Beats Eats to cancel this year's festival. And in lieu of that, the entity that conducts that, that community-wide festival would like to have a scaled-down community event that includes a driving concept and a much smaller affair. And that's, that's, we've given them an invitation for, around Mr. Witz to give you more information, but staff has worked with him as well to work out the details and this is presented for your consideration. So let's see if Mr. Witz is on, online and we would allow him to provide additional information of this alternative festival.
All right, questions for Mr. Brake? Mr. Macy?
Is there a cost to the city? Are we providing any services? Can you talk about that?
I don't believe there is, that because of the scaled-down of the nature that's associated with this. But again, I would defer to the providers.
Mr. Dubach?
So what we're talking about here is not authorizing a proposal, but having staff start conversations about it. So we'd talk about hours, parking, safety regulations, whether or not they have health experts consulting on whether or not this is actually something that's safe to do, those that'll be part of our negotiation.
That is correct. This is authorization to come up with an agreement that we'd come back at a subsequent meeting.
And while, you know, we hope we can get to a place where we can provide some entertainment at a time when residents are clearly starved for, you know, something to do. We have to make sure that we're doing so safely, not drawing huge crowds to our downtown, not exposing people to risk, especially since the downtown itself is a neighborhood and we don't want to expose residents to unnecessary risk. So, that being said, we're going to pursue this in good faith as an idea worth having conversation about. But it's entirely possible that you can't come to terms. Our vote here today does not guarantee that this is happening.
It, it doesn't, but I think he's looking for, because it's, it's less than two months away of at least endorsing the concept, that does not, like you indicated. away, of at least endorsing the concept, that does not, like you indicated, uh, mean a guarantee, but, uh, at, at the same time, if, if it's left up in the air, then it does not give sufficient time to, uh, the, what is entailed in the promotions and everything else. So, uh, again, that's why I would defer to the, uh, the proprietor. He is available and can answer specific questions, so you can hear a little bit more of the details of what we're even talking about of this alternative festival event.
I guess for, for Mr. Witz, specifically, do you, have you been in touch with it? Do you intend to engage the county health department, um, to talk about best practices and crowd control and, you know, how to ensure that, that we're not putting folks at risk?
Sure. Um, and one of the nice things about, uh, well, first of all, I am bummed out to have had to make this announcement last week, and just, just saying, it's, it's an unfortunate, uh, you know, another adversity of our current situation, and definitely did not wanna bring this news, uh, you know, to the commission, uh, you know, which we announced last week. Um, to your question, and also to a couple of the comments, uh, you know, that were made earlier, the, this has been, um, made, these plans have been, you know, been in the works for three weeks. Our cancellation, you know, was kind of in my, our minds long before the announcement, but we were working on a way to meaningful, meaningfully make an impact on the community and show some spirit. All of our plans have been directly and collaborated on with Kathy Forsley, the head of Oakland County Health Department, and I've been working with the state on putting together guidelines and everything, that we're also doing follow-state guidelines, um, as well. To give you an example of why ours will not create a scene in the downtown compared to what happened in Detroit this past weekend, where they announced an event and they just told everybody to show up. Everything we're doing is on a reserved purchase ticket basis, so we are not advertising to the public to come out. We're advertising the opportunity to buy one of a limited amount of cars in the drive-thru or a limited pass to view the art fair. So, um, you know, we are planning this not in a way to drive people, uh, you know, to the downtown and, and create any kind of commotion, and everything we're doing from a safety standpoint is exactly in collaboration with the Oakland County Health Department. And we also understand that, you know, things could be subject to a change, you know, in state policy, which could necessitate cancellation, but, uh, you know, we are asking for something more than just negotiation. We're asking for approval, you know, to move forward, um, you know, and working out the details, uh, you know, we're certainly, the amount of planning that we're doing, having to put these art shows on sale, the drive-through, announcing the bands, which would be August seventh, we're, you know, not wanting to wait, uh, you know, two weeks, and in exchange for that, uh, you have my word and can verify with the Oakland County Health Department. In fact, Kathy Forsley was quoted in the, in several papers, um, and put her quote on our press release, saying that we had worked specifically with her in the Oakland County Health Department on safety, uh, you know, safety guidelines. And just on a bigger picture standpoint, you know, I do, you know, wanna state that the capacities that we'll have at our events are, are going to be less than some of the restaurants are allowed in this community, uh, and we're gonna be outdoors. They're gonna be significantly less than what you see at Somerset Mall and other areas. We're gonna be much safer, and we're also gonna be held outdoors and absolutely, you know, in planning with the Health Department. In response to the comment, uh, the two comments that were made earlier, we would not use parking meters at all in any way, shape or form. Uh, we would not be requesting specific parking. Uh, the drive-through concerts, we would have a staging area in the one lot that we're requesting, um, and then the concert would be in the other, and in the Sherman Lot where the art fair is, we would use though that, uh, lot for parking for folks as well as the art fair itself, and we would also reserve spaces for people who might have trained Amtrak needs or smart bus needs and put signage up there. So we would absolutely not impact, uh, any parking, you know, other than the lots that we're trying to show the spirit with. And then in relation to music, uh, we would have the music at, at far lower levels. Uh, we would also be done by eleven instead of eleven thirty, and on, uh, Monday would be nine thirty, um, and these are local bands, uh, and we would not, the music levels would be, uh, at lesser amounts, uh, just because of the small amount of people in the parking lot. You would not need the, the type of volume, you know, coverage. And then to, uh, Commissioner Macy's question, uh, about, uh, city services, we would be asking for a very small amount of police coverage, and the purpose of that would be to make sure that people who are walking did not stop at the fence line and, uh, you know, and, and work with our security, just backup our security to not, you know, stand and watch. But what we're also doing is we are going through the expense of fencing the lot with the concerts and putting a green screen on there, so it would not be conducive to the outside public, um, you know, watching this. So we're really, um, absolutely have in mind not to try and gather crowds, and, uh, you know, we all have a lot at, at stake, and we're trying to show spirit, and if you did not hear the announcement, we are working closely with Oakland County on, on getting funds to support local musicians, and, uh, we hope to raise a half million dollars to a million dollars for local musicians in the community, and the drive-through concerts is kind of the icing on the, the cake. We have four hundred bands, um, performing virtually as fundraisers, and we will have a donation button on our website for that. And, um, again, uh, local musicians entirely, local artists participating entirely, and we'll have about a three hundred thousand dollar advertising, uh, campaign, uh, just to promote music and musicians and try and help people out and who are definitely getting their butts kicked, uh, you know, right now, which, you know, is the music community and someone we work with. So I tried to answer, uh, all the questions so far and, and, and also the two comments from, from the comment session.
Any other questions, uh, for Mr. Break or for Mr. Witz? I think Mr. Witz's very long, uh, yes answer probably answered most of our questions. Commissioner Dubac?
Yes, I'll just say, yeah, Mr. Witz, that, you know, Art's Beats Needs is one of my family's favorite summer traditions. It's been several months and a summer of disappointing my kids. Thing after thing is all their favorite traditions are not happening. Uh, so I appreciate the effort to try and bring, um, you know, some joy and activity, um, to what's a very difficult time. Um, and, and I wanna give you the space to try and make that happen, but I just wanna be clear that public safety and not creating a space where crowds are gonna gather and make us ground zero, you know, for potential health risks is a real concern. So I want to support this. I just wanna be certain that we're on the same page, that public health is our priority number one.
Yeah, this is a money, uh, you know, a money, uh, I'm not, I'm not gonna say, it, it's, it's a brutal financial year, uh, for what we're doing, and these specific efforts, just so you understand, um, are not to, uh, to drive crowds in, uh, you know, the, the thirty dollars a ticket for the cars are all going to the musicians. Uh, we're using some sponsorship, uh, funding to cover the cost of the staging, so we're basically just creating this for the bands and to show spirit and to show people how to try and do something, you know, right, and I certainly hope we are not, uh, you know, dealing with mitigated plans, uh, you know, next year and, and that we can get through this. And, and, uh, again, same with the art fair, we're charging five dollars, um, you know, to get in and, uh, a, a guarantee of spending twenty-five dollars with an artist, and, and we'll give each person for that thirty dollars a coupon of twenty-five dollars of, of art that can be spent. So there's no money here to get more people. There's no incentive. Um, I, everything on this is, is as it shows on the website, and as we've announced, it's completely for the community to show spirit and to, you know, hopefully raise some very meaningful amounts of money for musicians, uh, you know, and we have four hundred bands signed up, eight hundred musicians already who qualify, who've made fifty percent or more of their funds from the music industry prior to COVID, which is the qualification to share in the fund we're creating.
Any other questions? Comments? Motions?
And, and Mr. Mayor, before the, I would just ask that the motion, um, you know, is one that supports us moving forward. We certainly do have to come to terms, but, uh, coming back to you and having a, a subsequent, uh, you know, um, you know, I'm trying to put everything on the table and answer all questions, and we do understand that this could cancel anyway if, uh, you know, Michigan moves to phase three. So we're, we're just hoping to get, get through, uh, this body as best as possible, so I could work with Mr. Break and, uh, you know, Mr. Gillum and, uh, Mr. O'Donoghue on the, on the details.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that comment, and I think this commission wouldn't, you know, vote, uh, to negotiate something that they didn't feel, you know, had a probability of, uh, being accepted. I think that, you know, the way it's presented is today is we, we still have to approve any contract that comes in front of us. So, um, you know, I think that if the, the basis of that is based on what you explained and our staff working to number one priority, ensure that the health and safety of the public is paramount, and that we don't have any likelihood of, you know, additional spread, that everything, you know, the operations and negotiations and the agreement tighten that down, and we have, you know, alignment with the county health and all that stuff, I think then, you know, um, you know, that's probably gonna be the number one thing, um, that would stand in the way. Uh, but if we can work that out, which is, you know, um, you know, up for discussion between the experts on our staff and, and the, and your organization, then, you know, I don't think anyone is, is gonna vote for, um, to go and negotiate, knowing that they have no support for the event. So at least I hope that.
They're, they're, okay, I didn't need to say that. My apologies.
Um, Commissioner Dubac?
Mr. Witz, would you, um, would you be open to if, if we, you know, moved to have staff move forward negotiations and, and, and try and, you know, get some structure to an agreement, um, that our, uh, final approval is pending, um, a positive recommendation from the county health department?
Sure. I mean, I, I can forward you the email from Kathy. We already have that, so I can email you her approval based on us following certain safety guidelines. I can definitely just forward, um, I'll forward it to, uh, Mr. Break to forward to everyone, uh, but we have an email from her in writing already providing approval, you know, based on, uh, you know, based on that.
Right. And I mean, we, whatever the final details are that we work out, I just, I just wanna make sure that we're still totally aligned with, with, uh, guidance from health experts.
Yep. And, and thank you for your nice words about the event as well. I appreciate that.
You know, I mean, I'm super bummed out. Uh, all right, so, well, we'll see where we're at on this. You know, uh, given that, I'll move for approval, the caveat that we do have, uh, you know, the support endorsement of county health department on, on our final deal.
The motion by Commissioner Dubac. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. Uh, discussion. Commissioner Lavassar?
I, I will support the motion, and I would just simply ask Mr. Witz and the staff to, uh, uh, we tend to promote communication with, with our neighbors. We did have a few folks call into public comment tonight. We're a bit concerned, and I just think it would be helpful if, if Mr. Witz and this, and our staff could, could reach out to some of those folks, uh, to try to address their concerns as well as to let them know what Mr. Witz's plans are.
Other discussion? I'll just add, you know, historically, Art's Beats Needs is a major contributor to a lot of Royal Oak charities, um, certainly to the music and art industry. We tend to think of, um, you know, economic impact, uh, in terms of the auto industry and the restaurant industry, but there are a lot of musicians out there that are hurting right now as well, and if this is an opportunity to, to pump in a little bit of economic stimulus into some of our local artists and musicians that need a little help, and we can do it in a really safe way, uh, I think this is something that can be very positive for our community. And I, I do appreciate the thought, Mr. Witz, for, um, thinking innovatively here, thinking proactively, involving county health right from the get-go. I think that makes these discussions a lot easier to have, uh, and, um, you know, it's just sort of a testament to, um, you know, the quality of events, uh, that, that he hopes to bring. So I'm very eager to see. Devil's always in the detail, uh, but, you know, I do have faith in, in all parties here that, um, something can, um, you know, be agreed upon that is in the best interest of, of the public, uh, with very minimal risk to the public. So I'll be supporting the motion. All right, um, notwithstanding any other discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Gibbs.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavassar.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. Good luck, Mr. Witz. We look forward to seeing, uh, the final product here.
Thank you. Smallest show ever, so.
Well, the show must go on, right?
Absolutely. Thank you, everybody. Stay healthy, stay safe. Thank you.
All right, take care.
Bye-bye.
All right, this brings us to item eleven tonight, which is recreational marijuana licensing ordinance, second reading. Uh, I believe this goes to Mr. Gillum.
Mayor and commissioners, good evening. Uh, what you have before you tonight is a proposed recreational marijuana licensing ordinance for potential adoption and second reading. Um, this is largely based upon the draft that, uh, we discussed at your special meeting a week ago Thursday. Um, we have made some updates to the ordinance. Uh, the ordinance does contain the cap on the number of licenses, both for the retail and the micro businesses that were discussed, um, as well as the other one, the cap on the other types of, of licenses that would be permitted for the establishments. Uh, we've made, uh, changes as discussed by the commission in terms of the competitive process would be used to choose if, in fact, there are more applicants than there are license available under the cap. Um, the ordinance still contains the, uh, distancing prohibitions. There, there would be no marijuana establishment within one thousand feet of any school. Further, that there would be no retailer or micro business within a thousand feet of another retailer or a micro business. Um, we've also clarified with explicit language to make very clear that there would be no consumption of any marijuana that would be allowed on the premises of any recreational establishment. So, uh, Tom Forshee from Dickinson Rights' Grand Rapids office, who's done a yeoman's amount of work on this ordinance, is with us. Uh, Tom, I don't know if you had anything to add at this point?
Oh, thank you. Um, no, I'd just like to, uh, thank Mr. Gillum and Mr. Thwing, um, on, uh, helping look through this. Uh, it's, you know, it's always a big task, um, but I think we incorporated all the, the comments, uh, that, that you made last time. Actually, listen, you can listen to these, um, these, uh, recordings at double speed, I found, which is kinda cool, because I, I could go and make sure that I, uh, refreshed my memory on what, what everyone said with just a little bit of a higher pitched your voice, but, um, so I, I think we made, I think we made a lot of, I think we made all the, the changes that were requested. We added those, uh, two items to the competitive process, uh, to reflect, um, employee treatment and, um, uh, what was the other?
Diversity, is that?
Yeah, yeah, diversity and inclusion. And, um, I did, I did some looking about how we could word that, um, and some of the benefits that I could link to those, um, what, what the benefits are to businesses, uh, to, to have those types of things in place. Um, and I didn't, I didn't peg it necessarily, uh, to like living wage specifically, uh, because there's some concerns about, um, there, there's some, there's a Michigan statute regarding, uh, setting living wages, et cetera. Uh, so it's, it's a little more broad than that, but I think it, it can capture, uh, and will prompt, uh, someone who's applying to, uh, speak to that. And, and of course, you can, you can, um, you know, give it the weight that you, that you feel it deserves, uh, among all the rest of the criteria. But, I'm just happy to answer any questions, um, that you have.
Questions for Mr. Gillum or Mr. Forshee? Okay, I don't see anybody raising their hands at this point. Oh, Commissioner Perush?
Last time we talked about, a, a lot about the competitive criteria for evaluating the license applications when they commence. And I know that there has been some concern expressed about impact on the neighborhood. I'm not so sure that it's all justified, but we can go into that part a little bit later. But I'm wondering if, in consideration of that concern, it wouldn't be possible to add a criteria that would measure, um, the, the proposed. that would measure, um, the, the proposed applicant's ability to, um, buffer the business from the neighborhood in some way or evaluate their ability in their application and their site plan in terms of how they have created separation or buffer from anything that might be next door to them or anything that might be close to them. That obviously is a, is something that we would consider in the special land use process test, which is more of a site plan process. But I'm wondering if it would be possible or advisable to add this as part of the competitive criteria as well. I know that the city of Berkeley across Woodward from us has a, a much more, um, number, numerical ranking based criteria by which they're evaluating their applications. And they're actually giving some additional points, and it's a point system, um, to applicants who, um, are, um, not necessarily further away from, for example, residential properties, but who are taking extra steps to buffer, um, their business operation from neighboring businesses as well as neighborhoods. So I guess I'm asking, would it be appropriate to add that as part of our competitive process that's in the licensing, um, ordinance? Or should we just leave that to the whole site plan, special land use issue?
That's a good, that's a good point. My, my inclination on that would be to leave it to the site plan or the special land use review, given that, then you can kind of look at it on a case-by-case basis with land use principles. I think it gets a little removed from the most likely to succeed, uh, criteria of the statute for just letting, for a competitive process. Uh, I think you will see, you know, if, when they submit something, you will be able to see, um, at least what they have in mind. And if there's something that's troubling that you'd say, wow, this, this particular site is just terribly suited, it might come out in one of the other criteria. But, I mean, landscaping, buffering, um, those type of things, I think would probably be, rest better with a special land use, just because the planning commission knows what they're looking for there. And then, of course, eventually it'll come back to you as well. So if there's some reason why, you know, most places can typically get their buffering in order, unless there's very unusual circumstances. And you might be able to tease that out just by looking at their site plan in the beginning. It might not be a great, great fit. So that, that's my inclination is to leave that for the special land use. But that, that's, that would be up to you.
Okay, thanks.
Pat, if I could weigh in on that, in terms of the, the, the competitive process that's set forward in the draft, there is an item that includes as one of the criteria, the contents of the application that's submitted. It's under section 4A. It's on page 13 of the clean copy of the ordinance draft. And in terms of the contents of the submitted application, it talks about in general terms, security lighting, um, site plans, so on, so on. To quote, "which illustrates the likely success of the proposed business in harmony with the surrounding properties at the proposed site." So I think it's somewhat factored in, but, um, so I think it would be one consideration. But I think I would generally agree with Tom, that in terms of buffering and, and screening and things like that, those are probably more appropriate factors to be addressed or weighed more heavily in the special land use review process.
So, Mr. Gillum, just to confirm, in the application process, if somebody were to submit, you know, some language or, you know, in their plan as far as description of it, and it included a double-story mega facility at the Golden Basket, then that could be weighed far more negatively and put down to the bottom of the list versus, you know, something that's really harmonious with the, um, placement, you know, adjoining businesses and.
That would be, could be, would or could be a factor in the competitive process evaluation, yes.
Okay, because it determines the success of, you know, overall the business, understood. Okay, I saw Commissioner Douglas with her hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor, just glancing at the draft zoning ordinance, uh, there are provisions there that the establishment designed and will be constructed to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. Um, and the, uh, will not be hazardous or disturbing to existing uses or uses reasonably anticipated in the future. I think that gives the planning commission and subsequently the city commission a fair amount of leeway in terms of screening from adjacent properties.
Agreed. Okay, any other questions, comments? Commissioner Dubak.
Commissioner Perush's comment about, you know, how they're, you know, using numer- scoring on their criteria, which is, is that not our intent with the city manager's process? Would it be more of a narrative review highlighting, um, why he or doesn't he thinks, you know, whoever he puts at the top of the list is at the top of the list? Is that the intent?
Yeah, so, you know, we, we did this sort of intentionally. We, we evaluated, would it be worth it to do a numerical grading versus just kind of like looking at all the criteria together and coming out with an answer using the totality of all the criteria? And we landed on using the totality of all the criteria because I think, you know, when you, when you assign numbers, it sounds, it sounds possibly more scientific, I guess. But then people are going to look at what the numbers are. Why did you grade me a three instead of a five? Why did you, why wasn't our 4.5 instead of a five? And so a lot of these things, um, it, it's hard to say, to rank this as a numerical value. And so when we kept going back to what the statute criteria was, we had to keep saying, well, all these things have to be taken into consideration to ultimately arrive at what the statute tells us, the competitive process must yield. So, um, we decided just to go with that you look at all, all this together. Ultimately, you have to hit that statutory criteria about which one is most likely to succeed and follow the act in the community. So to, to give certain weight in numbers to each one, um, just seemed like it was more subject to challenge than if you just looked at it as a whole and went right back to the statutory language.
Understood. And then on the, uh, the language around, you know, what I deem living wage, I think is, I understand what you're saying. Would it be acceptable to say attract highly capable workers?
Yes. Yeah, I think so. Yeah, like I said, that was, um, there, there's some statutory limitations there that I, I, we didn't want to go down that road and have it be subject to challenge unnecessarily. I think you, you get to some of the same places, but yeah, that, that kind of language, I mean, I, I think that, that would be fine.
Okay. What we got right now?
Anybody else? Commissioner Levaser?
Yeah, I note that, uh, the resolution that passed on first reading last week provides for one processor, one safety compliance, one transporter, secure transporter. But I note that there's three different classes of growing facilities. And my understanding is that those vary by size, uh, class A, B, and C. If I, if I recall correctly, C is the largest, or do I have that backwards?
I believe that the class C is the largest, yes.
That too.
And, and to me, that seems kind of a strange way. I mean, we're, we're, we're doing what we have to based on what the state statute is. But I'm wondering, uh, is it within this commission's authority to basically say, well, we only want one grower total of any of those three categories? Or we only want a small growing facility and, and we don't want the, the larger ones? Is that within our authority? Could, could we say one to, to a class A and zero to class B, zero to class C?
Yes, I believe that would be in your authority to do that, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I mean, I mean, we got a second, or this has been the first reading. We got a second, Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I'm just, I want to explore what Commissioner Levaser has proposed here. So, um, A, the, of the growers, class A is small, class B is medium, and class C is the Papa Bear size. But if we were to allow, is Commissioner Levaser interested in only a class A? Or if we were to allow a class C, a, a larger operation, why wouldn't we allow a B or A, which are smaller? So my question to the commissioner is, are you talking about just a class A?
Commissioner Levaser?
Well, I'm going to be voting no on this regardless, but I'm trying to plant a seed for other commissioners if they, uh, think it may be prudent to, uh, be a little bit more cautious and limit the, uh, either the, the number or the size of growers.
I see, okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Wait, Commissioner Gillum wants, or I'm sorry, Mr. Gillum wants to weigh in.
I got a promotion, thank you.
You don't like the pay, trust me, Mr. Gillum.
Just, just so everyone is clear, I'm, um, found the, the, uh, the definition of the different grower establishments in the MRTMA. A class A grower can cultivate, um, not more than 100 plants. A class B is authorized to cultivate not more than 500 plants. And a class C grower is authorized to cultivate not more than 2,000 marijuana plants. Again, A is the smallest, up to not more than 100, B not more than 500, C not more than 2,000 plants.
And as it's written right now, it's one of each. If they can meet the zoning criteria.
Or could we say one of, not more than one for any three? I think maybe that's, I, I don't know, at the time, we were thinking so much about the size of the operations as far as the function of the operation.
Well, I, you, I think you could, um, I think zoning will possibly restrict the number as well. And then just the number of, um, and maybe Mr. Thwing has an idea of the number of parcels that could actually be used for, um, for a growing facility. But, uh, yeah, so I, I think you could, you could, you could just say, you know, one of type A and zero of the other two, or you could just let zoning kind of pair those down to where they would otherwise.
Couldn't say one facility, one grow facility regardless if it's A, B, or C.
I think you could do that, too.
Okay, because I think that might have been a little bit more aligned with our intent previously. It was just to have one.
One grow facility, no matter what type.
Yeah, if somebody wants to bring in a small one, or if they want to bring in a little bit bigger one with up to 2,000 plants in a, in a bigger commercial building, even 2,000 plants, I'm trying to figure out the number of square feet. This wouldn't be multiple football fields. I saw Commissioner Dubak with his hand up.
Yeah, Mayor, since, you know, you're kind of going down this turn of thought, I'm just curious what problem it is we're solving for between the thousand-foot step back, the restriction to industrial, and the fact that real estate and Royal Oak probably is going to be conducive for a lot of, you know, large grows. I mean, should we be restricting the potential for, uh, the type of business that actually has like the highest skilled, highest paying jobs? I'm, I'm just curious, what, what is the problem that we're solving for with this?
That's a fair question. Mr. Perush?
Hang on, there we go. I was going to raise the same issue. I mean, we, um, hear from people concerns about high property taxes and so on and so forth in the residential neighborhoods, but one of the reasons that they're so high is that we have a very, very small industrial area paying property taxes. And I think to the extent that we can maximize the potential of the area by allowing just about whatever can actually fit due to the zoning ordinance criteria, should be, should be a good thing. We have the potential of losing or had lost over the years, some of the larger industrial facilities to embassheads that were up, especially north of 14 Mile and the Delamere Road area, just because, um, the way manufacturing is going, it's changing, and a lot of those shops closed up. So to the extent that we can maximize the value of those properties by using them for other types of industrial uses like a grow facility, I think, um, we should encourage. So I guess I'm not comfortable with limiting, um, too, in too restrictive a way, the potential of, of having grow facilities in that area.
I'll just add to that, I mean, we got to remember too, that, um, we'd also have to approve a site plan and, you know, look at the criteria, if it's not harmonious with the area. So if someone came in, they wanted to do a C and we already had an A, you know, we, we can look and see if that's going to be, you know, have impacts, you know, at the particular location, you know, the petitioner is looking to put it, and mitigate any unnecessary or unwelcome consequences with a site plan. Because typically these things, I mean, they're not going to have the same issues that like retail establishments would have or anything like that. They're just going to be mostly on the industrial end. Are they going to produce smells? Like all those things we'd have to consider with the site plan. And we'd have the ability to reject at that time versus preemptively reject with a limit. So I understand the logic, Commissioner Perush, it makes sense. Commissioner Perush and Commissioner Douglas.
Um, just very briefly, I'm just going to bring this up. It, it's not completely germane to this specific discussion about the grow facilities, but to the people who are listening, who are getting a little nervous about the talk, about the number of plants that are going to be all of a sudden within Royal Oak. Keep in mind that the state law allows each individual property owner homeowner to grow 12 plants, 12 plants on their own property. Which means if you have a block of 10 houses and they all are interested in growing marijuana, you're going to have 12 plants potentially in each house in a residential neighborhood. So the idea that we're just going to put marijuana in an industrial area perhaps, and it's not going to be close to it, um, that's, that's pie in the sky. That ain't going to happen. Because state law allows each individual property owner to have 12 plants in their basement or in a secure facility outside in the shed. So, um, we have to keep that in mind. But that's more to the zoning ordinance. I just wanted to throw that out there to let people understand that, um, even in terms of this, this licensing ordinance, we're not going to be completely eliminating marijuana activity in the city and isolating it into one industrial area. Just ain't going to.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, further in support of the idea of not, uh, not establishing that we'll only allow one grower irrespective of class. Doing that would put the city manager in, uh, an uncomfortable position because if we had applications from an A, a B, and a C, he would be having to make a decision based on qualities other than what I think we intend through the, the licensing language. So I'm going to continue to support the idea that we will allow one A, one B, and one C.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Dubak?
Mayor, with the one change that I raised with regard to highly skilled workers, I'll move for approval on second reading.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Dubak, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush? Discussion. Commissioner Dubak?
So I guess just a couple of things to address, you know, some of the concerns we heard tonight. I noticed a lot of the, uh, the concerns about, you know, 12, 15 stories on Woodward, which is a majority of what we heard, uh, last week and the week before has faded away. And, you know, some of the things that we heard, you know, was there's, there's no study of impact on our, uh, city. You can't really study the impact of something that's not there, but we have looked at studies and this is what we discussed, because there are studies of impact on other cities, um, a good number of them. And again, we've been at this for, for a year and a half, and we've looked quite closely at those. And, I mean, the worst thing that any of those studies, if you want to cherry pick data, shows impact on, on par with if restaurants were to move in, which isn't allowed use in general. There is no evidence that there are all these detrimental effects. There's just, there's just not any evidence of that. So in discussing public policy, you know, it, it seems like we really need to root ourselves in, in facts and evidence and, and make decisions that are, that are aligned with the best interest of our community and the will of our voters. But to that end, um, I know the chief is still on, uh, chief. You know, there's been people throwing around concerns of. concerns, supposed to concerns about police department. Do you anticipate the presence of retail establishments to be down Woodward or, or in industrial areas? Do you anticipate that to be a drain on police resources?
Commissioner, no, I don't. I've been in contact with both Hazel Park and Ferndale. Ferndale has had zero issues. Hazel Park, the first one that opened up, early on, there were some parking issues. They got those worked out, but they have two operating, and they have no problems there at all. So I can only go, like you said, I can only go by the data. We've, we've contacted departments, have had dispensaries, and they're telling me they're not experiencing any of these issues.
Okay, thanks, chief. All right, so that's on the record. We also heard some discussion of, you know, and this is probably more appropriate for the, for the next ordinance, but I would like to address it now, if possible, that this should be an adult business. And I know that Commissioner Douglas has spoken really eloquently to that and what we're doing and why. I'm just wondering if she'd be willing to speak to that again, how what we're doing makes sense versus adult business.
So, yes, our zoning ordinance identifies certain setbacks for adult businesses. But interestingly enough, it doesn't impose many other standards on such businesses. And yet here, we are creating a special category of business and imposing enormous standards and limitations on this business, far more than any other category of business in our city. I mean, beyond just the zoning and the building codes that they have to follow, but everything from, and you know, it's hard to enumerate this because we've got pages and pages of limitations. Criminal background checks, business track record and capital, security, odor control, signage limitations, their size is limited by the amount of parking, the kind of architectural features, no flashing lights. Annual license renewals, people will face the potential fine or up to 93 days in jail operators for any failures in their ability to meet our requirements. I mean, we've gone well beyond the limits that we place on other, on what are called adult businesses. And, and I think the result of that, and the result of now decades of experience around the country with marijuana legalization in multiple cities, including Michigan, that I think this is the right approach to carve out a definition for marijuana businesses that is different from, and even more restrictive than that we apply to adult businesses. Is that what you were going for, Commissioner?
That is exactly, I've heard you, I've heard you say that before, as we've been discussing this for a while. And I think that really succinctly states that what we're doing is far more restrictive by any conceivable measure. So for asking us to go to adult business would actually be a downgrade as far as us being able to safeguard the public. You both mentioned traffic, which, and we're talking about Woodward, which is a major thoroughfare, a-lane highway, and it's general business, which means all, a lot of business types there, like restaurants and things are going to generate people coming and going, you know, convenience store, grocery store. That doesn't seem to me like a reason to disregard any particular business proposal, particularly that we're, because we're talking about Woodward and a general business district, which is designed for people to move through. Keep it out of the neighborhoods, absolutely, we will keep it out of the neighborhoods. We're talking about general business, which is, you know, also where Berkeley and Ferndale have approved uses as well as industrial, like we have. Woodward is general business, it is neighborhood adjacent, just like our industrial areas are neighborhood adjacent. There is no industrial area that you can find that's more than 1,000 feet away from, I think there's one actually, there's one building and one space that actually you can go in every direction and get 1,000 feet away from, from any residential area. But Woodward is general business, it is, if people pointing to a number that people don't want in neighborhoods, no one's putting it in neighborhoods, we're putting it in general business known areas, which people were certainly comfortable with in the survey that we conducted. What do we have from residents? So, you know, why aren't we listening to residents? And I'm actually going down this list to illustrate I am very much listening, and I'm assessing these concerns, and we're going through a thoughtful process here, as we have been since November of 2018. We have the 2018 election where 70% of Royal Oak has voted yes. The ballot language makes no reference to decriminalization. It's to allow for the legalized consumption of marijuana, for the legalized sale and taxation of marijuana. It was actually, as ballot language goes, really simple and straightforward, that it was going to allow for people to buy and sell marijuana. There was not a case of decriminalization being made in the ballot language. Now, that's not to say that that wasn't a motive for some folks who voted for it, it certainly was. It's a strong, there's a strong case for decriminalizing and the cost savings and the human suffering that's avoided by decriminalizing. But nevertheless, Royal Oak voted 70%, yes, State of Michigan voted 50%. We also had the 2019 election, which we had been talking about this from November 2018 all the way through our 2019 local election. And the city elected a majority of Commissioners who are on the record publicly stating a commitment to fulfill the will of voters who overwhelmingly supported recreational marijuana in 2018. So that's, so that's two elections. And then, of course, we did our study because we wanted to be sure what residents meant. And I think it's, I don't know how to explain to folks what a scientific survey is, but it was a scientific survey conducted by a professional firm. You know, like when you read in the newspaper, you know, what, you know, Governor Whitmer's approval rating is, that's based on scientific studies. Michigan has about 10 million people, they, to get to the error rate that we got in Royal Oak, you have to survey 700 people in the state of Michigan to get to plus minus three or five scientific study. So that's what we did. Now, I guess folks could debate whether or not scientific surveys are a thing. But we, that was a tool that we implemented to try and make sure we're getting clear direction from residents and not just listening to whoever was most loudest in our ear. Because I assure you, there are a lot of pro marijuana folks who want absolutely no regulation and everywhere in the city who are also very much advocating on this issue. And, you know, trying to go about this in a way that, again, establishes good public policy that reflects the will of our voters and sets our community up for success. So, so what do we have from residents? We definitely have those three things, as well as a flurry of comments from folks, not just what came in in the last week, but for the last almost two years. What's the hurry? Again, been working at this for two years. I understand a couple of my fellow Commissioners have come up with concerns in the last week that were not raised in any of our nearly 20 meetings we publicly held on this issue. I, I don't know why that's the case. I feel like we've all been working in earnest and good faith, and they've been there. We've all been here at the table having, I think, really thoughtful discussion and conversation in an informed and strategic way about this. So in the 11th hour, just to sound the alarm, as if they weren't here for this entire process. It's troubling. And regarding missing maps, there are, there are no missing maps. Clearly, there was a last minute request made to see maps with the different stuff that could be additional what we requested tonight, which is work for staff. And we've got a longstanding policy that no one can laterally create a bunch of work for staff. That one must get a, you know, at least three Commissioners to request it or get it voted on in a Commission meeting. And to my, no one reached out to me asking for support of new maps, nobody asked me. I saw it in the paper that, you know, Commissioner LaVassar said he could not get support. No one asked me to ask for new maps. So that is also very, very troubling. I guess the last thing we heard is like, is all we can get marijuana? Obviously not, we've got new businesses hanging shingles in our city all the time. This isn't about chasing the marijuana industry. I'm, it's really frustrating for me to be in the position of being some sort of like marijuana advocate, which I've never been in my life. I'm desperately trying to walk this line of respecting the will of our residents, acknowledging the reality that we've been presented with in the wake of Prop 1, and that if we don't act and create an ordinance that we as a city have control over, it is entirely likely, as the state constitutional amendment allows, someone will bring a ballot initiative to us, and, and it would likely pass. And we won't have control over that because it'll be established in our, in our chart. We won't be able to change it except to go back to the ballot. This way, we have some control, we've done the work, we've had the conversation. So all that to say is, I'm not saying what we have here is perfect. I think we've moved conservatively and strategically. The requests I hear are just like delay, but it's, it's not really delay and make a different decision. It's delay and just don't do it. And clearly, that's not the will of our residents. I understand it's the will of some residents, and I understand it's frustrating beyond that side of an argument. Like, that's, that's frustrating. And I get that people are passionate about this, and passions are running high. But the idea that this is all just because, you know, backroom deals and people were paid off and whatever these allegations are, why then two years? Why are we the last community to do this? Why have we put so much work and time into this? It just falls apart in the slightest bit of scrutiny. So that's not saying folks have to agree, but you can't disagree that we've done work on this and that we have a workable and formed ordinance that I think gets to the overall majority of concerns that have been raised while still respecting the will of our residents. That is what I've been saying on the matter, and I'll be voting yes on this licensing ordinance.
Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner?
I apologize, there was noise in the background if I didn't hear you. Just a couple of points. Commissioner Dubbuck covered a lot, an awful lot of stuff that I was going to cover, either at this particular time or when we're talking about the zoning ordinance. But I think everyone needs to understand that, you know, we started this process 18 months ago. It was with a clear intent of developing a zoning ordinance and a licensing ordinance so that we could, in fact, permit marijuana facilities within the community. It's not a, it's not a subject that just came up within the last month or two where all of a sudden, oh my gosh, they're discussing marijuana facilities in the city. We didn't know about that. It was clear that that was our intent 18 months ago. So to the extent that the opponents are arguing that, oh, we don't have studies and we haven't, you know, studied this whole process. You've had, you have had 18 months to present to us evidence that it in fact does increase crime, or that it does in fact negatively impact property values, or that is, in fact, it does magnificently increase the traffic in that area. And you haven't done it, you haven't done it for 18 months. And you haven't done it because there is no evidence that those things occur. We've done our homework, and we've looked at what other communities in the region have done. This law, which decriminalized that, oh, inappropriate word, as Commissioner Dubbuck says, which made the consumption, recreational consumption of marijuana legal in the state of Michigan, was approved by the voters in 2008, that was 12 years ago. In the meantime, almost 70 cities within the city, within the state of Michigan, have developed licensing processes and actually have dispensaries operating in their own communities. They're big and they're small. I took a look at the list, and these are some of the communities that already have dispensaries operating within the city, within the state of Michigan. Addison, Adrian has five, Ann Arbor has 15, Baldwin, wherever that is, Bangor, Battle Creek has nine, Bay City has 10, Beaverton, Benzonia, for those of you who go up North Line, Buellaw has one, Big Rapids, Reevesville, there again, wherever that is, Buchanan and Burton. Those are just the As and the Bs. Those are the, the cities that actually have dispensaries already operating in your community. And do we hear news stories of, oh, you know, declining property values and crime, criminal activity in any of these communities related to these dispensaries? No, we don't, because that hasn't occurred. They're a highly regulated, highly licensed, highly monitored type of facility. And these communities, instead, yes, this is an operation that we can accept, and anything is appropriate to have in our community are doing just fine with it, and we will too. It reminds me in a lot of ways with some of the other types of licenses that we've considered giving over the years, whether it's for, what it was for the video game parlors, that was a huge debate decades ago, all kinds of rumors of criminal activity, and, you know, we're going to be poisoning our youth, so on and so forth. It never happened, it never happened, because they were highly regulated and highly monitored. And of course, they're now gone, but at the time, it was the same kind of controversy, an awful lot of imagined fears about what is going to happen based upon past practices which were never allowed at that time. And it never came to pass. This reminds me an awful lot of those, of those debates that occurred a long time ago about those types of land uses. So to the extent that there is allegations that we haven't done any studies, that we haven't been monitoring this, we don't know what we're talking about, that's unfortunately, that's not true. We've been doing a lot of work, we've been watching what other communities have been doing. Communities close to us already have facilities in process, dispensaries already operating. Berkeley is very close to issuing their first license, their applications are under review and process now. And it's, it's, it's not going to cause near the kinds of problems that people are unfortunately imagining and are not going to come to pass. We would not be, I live very, very close to Woodward. I know the impact that those types of businesses have on neighboring communities. And, and to the extent that if you look at all of the neighboring areas along Woodward Avenue, they're gorgeous, they're wonderful, all the way from 10 Mile all the way up to 14. And they've not been negatively impacted by any of the types of things that have happened with them, including the motels, which are unfortunately very close to ours. But anyway, a lot of the allegations, unfortunately, well intentioned, but unfortunately are not based on facts, and that's how we operate, we base our decisions on facts.
Thank you, Commissioner Prush. The motion on the table, anyone else wish to weigh in? All right, I'll just add, you know, in addition to the comments that my fellow Commissioners have made. You know, keep in mind, we talk about traffic issues and things like that. I think Commissioner Douglas forgot to bring up the forceful amendment she put into the zoning ordinance that talks about the additional parking requirements as a starting point that would need to be discussed more than any other type of retail business I can think of. And on top of that, all the site plan's got to be approved. So if any petitioner finds himself having the opportunity to get a license, wherever they plan to locate, those neighbors are going to get notified, and things are going to be looked at in really great detail, and it could all be denied because there might be a traffic issue. If there isn't a traffic issue, then it means that we remedied that concern. So this isn't an ordinance that allows for just stores to pop up. There's still a whole lot of criteria and processes that applicants have to go through as far as being qualified, the restrictions that they have to follow as far as, you know, like Commissioner Douglas said, with lighting and signage and all this other stuff, all the way to their site plan, you know, if there's concerns on the particular location as far as impact on easements and exit and entry and all these other things. So this is an ordinance to, to, like Commissioner Dubbuck said, to try to balance the various perspectives in the community in a very conservative way, something we've been talking about for well over a year, and that we've researched. And I can't speak entirely to the, to what other communities have done, but they've obviously acted much quicker, taken our time. Like our police chief said, we've interviewed and talked to other police departments to get perspective and understand, you know, how these places impact, you know, the local area. And I respect, and I totally respect the opinion that there are individuals who don't want to see any sort of retail establishment in our community. But I have to say, I equally respect the people that do want to see it. And so, you know, this is the job that we have here at the Commission, this is what we're charged with. There's no decision that's rubber stamped, this is why we've been talking about it for 18 months. So we can find a solution that's right for our community, that balances the perspectives and wills of everybody. So I guess unless there's any additional comments, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Gibbs. Mr. Gibbs? Mr. Gibbs? You might be off cycle on your mute. Commissioner Gibbs, I just need an audio, sorry, you might be, you're still on mute.
I'm on unmute.
I can hear you now.
Okay, the answer is no.
The answer is no.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
No.
And I vote yes. The motion passes. Okay, that brings us to item 12, the adoption of the recreational marijuana licensing ordinance fee schedule.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is something of the next step, given that the commission has now approved the recreational marijuana licensing ordinance. The state act and the ordinance that you've just approved provides for the payment of an application fee to offset the city's costs of processing the application, dealing with administrative issues and related enforcement costs for a marijuana establishment. What we're proposing is really a three-tiered fee schedule. First, at the time that an initial application is submitted to the city, there would be a non-refundable fee of $500, and that fee is to cover the initial preliminary review that the city does just to make sure that the application is complete. And then, once the application is then determined to be complete, then there's an additional payment of $4,500, which would need to be paid to actually cover the processing and review of the complete application. And then, third would be, in the case of the renewal of an existing establishment license, the fee would be $5,000. The state act sets a limit of $5,000 per year. So you'll notice the first two, the preliminary review and then the initial review of the application, a total of 5,000. The renewal is 5,000. Again, anecdotally, I'm not sure that the $5,000 fee is going to be sufficient to actually cover the city's costs, either in terms of an initial license or a renewal. But at this point in time, that's the maximum that the state law allows, and that's our recommendation. If for any reason we find later on that the fees don't amount to that much, that the city's costs don't amount to that much, we can reduce the amount. But at this point in time, we're recommending that, taking a conservative approach and recommending basically the maximum fee. I would indicate that in the memo that I provided to you, there is a typographical error in the second phrase of the clause of the resolution regarding the non-refundable application fee of, for the full review. It indicates it'll be $5,000, then in parentheses indicates it's $4,500. It should actually be $4,500 in both parts of the second clause of the resolution. Again, typographical error. I appreciate Commissioner LaVassar bringing that to my attention this afternoon. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, we would recommend adoption of the proposed fee schedule for recreational marijuana licenses.
Questions for Mr. Gillum? Commissioner Prush?
I'm over approval of these resolutions approving these fees.
A motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. Okay, I'll just add, it makes sense. And just like we charge any fee for any service, there's no profit making here for the city. That is not legal for the city to make money, but this is our best estimate to cover our costs as far as the statute will allow. And of course, if the cost to facilitate this process ends up being less, we'll change our fee schedule like we vote on regularly during the budget session. So I just want to make sure that's clear to everybody and our constituents. So I will call for the vote. I'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We have a fee schedule. All right, that brings us to item 13, which is the Planning Commission Recommendation Zoning Ordinance Text Amendments Marijuana and Medical Marijuana Facilities, second reading. I see the lovely Mr. Twing queued up, ready to go. The floor is yours, sir.
Very much. Thank you, Mayor, member of the commission. I'll be very brief with this. What staff has done is made some adjustments based on your meeting of the 16th. Because you put the cap in, there were a couple of procedural items that we changed. One that would require the petitioner be awarded a municipal license slot before we would accept an application under the zoning ordinance for special land use or site plan approval. The second one was in regards, from a procedural standpoint, we deleted two paragraphs that talked about how we would deal with multiple applicants and how we would process those. Again, because you put that cap in the licensing ordinance, those two paragraphs were deleted out of the zoning ordinance. This next item was really kind of a change in the reference to the chapter of the licensing ordinance, simply from 425 to 435. We also added the provision that Commissioner Douglas brought up, about 1.5 spaces of parking spaces for every 200 square feet of usable space for retailers and microbusinesses. The others would remain at one space for every 800. We also modified, for clarity, that the required 1,000-foot setback between marijuana retailers and microbusinesses was for only those establishments in Royal Oak. We're not intending to measure those distances from one that may be located in Berkeley or some other community. The last one, we did send out or include maps based on the discussion that the commission had about distances from parks and places of worship or church. We did include provisions or wording, depending on which way the commission wanted to go or not go, with a 200-foot, 250-foot setback from parks or places of worship, or a 500-foot setback from parks or places of worship. Those maps were linked. The wording was also included in page four of six of attachment one. But given that you've adopted the 1,000-foot setback as part of the licensing ordinance, I think those two provisions, that provision should simply be stripped and removed from the zoning ordinance. Then the last I would point out is the definitions between the zoning ordinance and the licensing ordinance are, don't line up entirely. Perhaps those all should be amended to match the licensing ordinance.
That's my comment. Questions for Mr. Twing? Okay, no questions. Must be crystal clear. Discussion. Commissioner Douglas?
I think I asked at the last meeting, and I'll reiterate that I don't see the relevance between setbacks from churches. I understand setbacks from schools, but I just, I don't see that one-to-one relationship between churches and the presence of marijuana establishments. I feel similarly about parks. I, they are, I mean, they're like the public street. So to create a setback from a public space like that doesn't make sense to me. I'm satisfied with the setbacks we have discussed. And I'm also cognizant of something that I think Commissioner Dubak said at our last meeting, that if you restrict the areas where these businesses can establish, you drive prices up and affect the market in a way that I feel is undesirable. I'm very fond of letting the market make decisions within the guidelines that we establish. So, in fact, I think I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve this ordinance on second reading with the provision that the definitions will be rewritten to match those in the licensing ordinance that we just approved.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush. Discussion.
I think I've, I think I've made my point.
Commissioner Prush?
I agree with Commissioner Douglas. I don't understand the relationship between the distancing for parks as well as churches. Parks and churches have existed on Woodward and been exposed to a whole lot of other businesses, which I consider to be much more detrimental. There is a gun range on Woodward Avenue that is very close to churches and relatively close to parks as well. And the churches have done just fine. In terms of the proximity to parks, again, that is a public space. People are concerned about children in the parks. No one is going to be allowing, no one allows their children now to go up onto Woodward from parks. Whether to go to a party store or a restaurant or anything else, parents just don't do that. I didn't do that when our kids lived within a half a block of Woodward Avenue. You don't let your kids go up there for any reason whatsoever, let alone to, you know, getting exposed to any kind of a business like this. So I guess I don't understand the nexus between the distance restrictions in parks and religious institutions. So I support the language that Commissioner Douglas offered in her resolution.
Commissioner Dubak?
I agree. I've not read or been presented with, by anyone at this table in the community, with any data or information as to the value for the community of that additional setback, whether it's clearly punitive and shrinking the market, and especially if we shrink to the extent that there are, there are so few places that are available for licenses, then our ability in site plan approval to say, no, we don't like that site, go somewhere else because we're so restricted to the market, becomes further limited. So unless someone can point to some data or some information as to what the value of these setbacks is, I'm happy with the motion.
Anybody else? Commissioner Prush?
The other thing I would remind everyone is that there is within this particular ordinance a requirement for a special land use permit for each individual application and each individual proposed operation, which will include notice to every resident and property owner within 300 feet, just like every other type of notice process, as well as a public hearing. So these businesses are not going to be approved administratively or even at the commission level without some kind of, without an actual notice, public hearing on each individual application. So it's important that, within that special land use process, we'll be able to evaluate not only the traffic issues, the buffer issues, the setback issues, the proximity to what else around them issues. And that will happen on an individual basis for each and every one. They're not going to be approved administratively, and they're not going to be approved at the city commission hall without that public hearing and public input process.
Commissioner LaVassar?
I know the opinion of this commission is that there is no adverse impact upon nearby residential properties. I hope that you're right in that regard. But we don't have buy-in from the nearby neighborhoods, the people who are most impacted by this, that this won't have an adverse impact on them. And for most, most of those folks that we're hearing from, they're learning for the first time in the last couple of weeks that there could be marijuana establishments placed very close to their homes. And that's, unfortunately, it's a failure by us as a commission to have appropriate outreach to them. We've been living with this issue for a long time, but it's brand new for a lot of these folks. And this is something which perhaps would have been helpful, and it could still be helpful to have town halls. Perhaps it would be helpful to actually have studies that are made part of our public record. I've heard references to studies, but a review of our public records is that shows that we haven't had any that were presented to us, and is that the public has had an opportunity to vet, to give their opinions, to point out where they may be strong, where they may be weak. I think it's appropriate at this time that we include a 150-foot buffer, at least for the time being, from residential neighborhoods. And until such time as, we've had the town halls and the further discussion, perhaps at that time, a 150-foot buffer from residential could be eliminated. But for right now, I would propose that we add, and this is my motion, to amend the motion on the floor, to add a 150-foot buffer from residential.
An amendment by Commissioner LaVassar. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion. Commissioner Dubak?
Given the lack of any evidence that this brings any value, I cannot, I cannot support the motion.
Commissioner Gibbs?
I fully support what Commissioner LaVassar is saying. And 150-foot, at least to begin with, it's easier to take away, it's easier to increase, it's easier to decrease the setback than it is to increase the setback. And we haven't had any studies saying that this is going to work out all peaches and cream or that it's going to work out bad. So without any studies and any evidence, other than hearsay, we don't know. Another problem is that the churches, 95% of the churches in Royal Oak have some sort of NA or AA program, Narcotics Anonymous and Alcoholics Anonymous. And having drug, locations where drugs can be bought is not really helping those who are seeking help from these churches and these houses of worship to keep themselves in a healthier position. So I will not be, I support Commissioner LaVassar, and if we go forward with the original motion, or with the original ordinance, I'm not going to support it.
I think I saw Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Prush.
Yeah, I don't know about Commissioner LaVassar, but I have been following this subject for more than the past year and a half, through planning journals, through municipal organizations, through informational websites, not on marijuana necessarily, but on municipal governance and planning. I mean, that's our job as commissioners, is to educate ourselves about these subjects. Yes, staff may bring us information, but I feel confident in the vast body of literature that I've read and the objective studies that I've seen that marijuana establishments are not going to be harmful in our community.
Commissioner Prush?
I think we've all, to some extent, done the same type of homework that Commissioner Douglas just referred to. This is not a new topic. Ever since it was legalized in 2008, we've been keeping on, at least we should have, and I have been, keeping on top of this issue and seeing how it has progressed throughout communities within the state of Michigan. And if people who are opposed to this had thought that it would have been appropriate to have our own studies or to have our own town hall meetings, you've had 18 months to propose that, and we haven't had any suggestion of it until the last two weeks. So I think you missed your opportunity to have those things actually occur. I'm not so sure that they would have given us any more enlightenment then, if they were to take place now. I don't think I would learn any more than I would have learned over the past period of years when we've been studying this whole issue since it was legalized in 2008. But the bottom line is, you've had 18 months to make those proposals, to have more additional town hall meetings or additional specific studies on specific issues, and we haven't heard of work. We've known that we've been moving toward actually licensing facilities for 18 months. This wasn't a surprise. And here we are, actually, in the process of actually approving it. And you missed your opportunity to actually have those things take place, unfortunately. In terms of your position, I think we've done more than enough homework on this issue in order to approve these tonight.
Commissioner Macy?
I just want to point out on behalf of staff that it's actually not the staff's job to provide us with studies to inform our policy decisions. And that would be an impossible task, given the makeup of this body, if that were their task. And all of the decisions that come in front of us, we are required really to do our own research. We don't have legislative staff for us, like perhaps the state representative's office does, to go do this research on our behalf. So everything that comes in front of us, should we pave unpaved roads? Should we have a splash pad at the park? No one is presenting us studies with, you know, what the community benefit will be for any of those things. These are things we have to do research on on our own. And if we have some specific aspect that we want staff to study for us, we need to ask them for that. And it's not fair at the end to shake our finger and say they didn't do this when we never asked. We were doing research on our own, as we do for every issue that comes before.
Commissioner Duba.
Yep, not to pile on, but I was operating under the assumption that we were all doing our research. Had I known the two of our colleagues, we're not actually looking into and researching and learning about this particular important issue our community is dealing with and we've been working with at the table for nearly two years now. I would have happily brought the things that I've been reading, the points, counterpoints I've been reading to the table. And we could have had that discussion, but not at one of our 20 public meetings did either of our colleagues raise concern about negative impact on neighborhoods, which led me to assume they were reading all the same studies I was reading. It were pretty conclusive that there is no measurable negative impact recorded.
Commissioner LaVassar?
We've done our reading. I've done my reading. But the thing is, we haven't presented any of this to the people who are going to be the most impacted by our decisions. That's the people who live in the neighborhoods. And when it comes to the neighborhoods and protecting their interests, that's our priority, priority number one. And as opposed to demanding that they come forward and present the reasons why we shouldn't change the status quo, this commission is changing the status quo. The burden should be upon this commission to show that it will not have an adverse impact upon them. Shouldn't, the burden shouldn't be upon them to explain why it will have an adverse impact.
Commissioner Duba.
Commissioner LaVassar, Mayor, he's a, Commissioner LaVassar is making the case that we should not act until there are no voices in opposition. That is a commitment to never act. And I think that is dereliction of duty. We're here to make decisions. We're here to research and make decisions representative of our community. And I think that everyone at this table knows that we have done that in good faith. And there are those seeking to destroy that good faith, even though they know and have been here every step of the way. And I think that's sad. I think that's sad for the partnership that we've had for the last two years on this issue.
Anybody else? All right, we have a motion on the table to amend the motion that Commissioner Douglas put forward to add an additional setback from residential zoned areas of 150 feet. I'm going to call for the vote. I'll start with Commissioner Gibbs.
Yes on the amendment.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
No.
Commissioner Prush?
No.
Commissioner Macy?
No.
Commissioner Duba?
No.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Commissioner Douglas, I almost had cut the wax from my ears to know what's going on. I'm voting yes on my own motion.
Okay, and I'll be voting no. Okay, so the amendment fails. We're back to the original motion. Discussion? I'll just add then, you know, I sort of, I actually did help bring up the idea about some of the alternative maps from churches and religious institutions and parks. You know, my gut instinct was, you know, to say, hey, you know, this is probably something we really need to consider. But the more I hear from my colleagues, the more I've looked into it and the more I use the cerebral part of my brain, I'm trying to draw a direct connection between, you know, the benefits of, of clear benefits of putting such restrictions in and the clear downsides. And to me, I'm still a little bit on the fence. However, I do think with the maximum limitations of one, potentially in the general business district, or one in the general business district for retail and one for the micro business, I think the risk is still very minimal. And I still think we have the opportunity to learn with this arrangement that we took care of in the licensing ordinance. So I'm not, I mean, to me, you know, I'm going to support the motion as it is. I do think that there's some arguments for and against, but when you weigh them and you really take a cerebral look at them and for, as elected officials here, sometimes we have to step away from our emotions and really focus on the facts at hand and the calculus at hand and, you know, really weigh the unintended consequences versus the intended benefits and, you know, to some extent be scientific about it. And in this case, I'm having a hard time arguing with my instincts here and arguing for my instincts when compelling arguments have been made that, you know, having such restrictions are probably not necessary. But again, we have general business, one maximum, which could be on Woodward, may not be on Woodward. And I think we're already mitigating any and all sorts of unknowns through the licensing ordinance, as it's been established already. So I think I feel comfortable enough. And as we go on and evaluate, you know, this process, changes are necessary. We'll make them for sure. So I'm going to call for the vote. I'm going to start with Commissioner LaVassar.
No.
Mr. Duba?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yeah.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
No.
And I vote yes. Okay, the motion passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Macy.
Can I ask a question to Mr. Gillum that's related to the ordinances?
Sure.
So Mr. Gillum, there was some suggestion in public comment that this commission is somehow benefiting from these establishments coming into town, these members of the commission. And I want to just make it clear that within the ordinance, it's going to be Mr. Brake who's looking at all the applications and doing the decision-making. And I wanted to ask your opinion because some operators have reached out to me and I'm sure other members of the commission, just to talk and ask questions. And I'd like to hear from you what you think about whether or not that's appropriate for us to talk to them and maybe if we could pass some kind of resolution that sort of puts the kibosh on it.
Well, if you've been receiving as many phone calls and emails as the community development department has, as our economic development director has, as I have been over the last couple of weeks, and I feel bad for you. But generally speaking, my advice or my recommendation to my elected officials has always been, whether it's been here in Royal Oak or any other community that I've ever worked for or worked with, has been not to discuss issues like this with application, with applicants directly because you are only one of a group and the group speaks collectively. You have no authority as an individual to speak on behalf of the group. You have no authority to commit on behalf of the group. And in some cases, what I have found, not in all cases, but in some cases, I've found that discussions like that can lead to bootstrapping because then you'll have a conversation with one person and then that person will talk to somebody else on the city commission and will say, "Well, I talked to Commissioner Macy and Commissioner Macy said this", whether it's entirely true or entirely accurate or not. And then they'll talk to someone else and they say, "Well, I talked to Commissioner Macy and I talked to Mayor Fornia." So, I mean, I can't specifically tell you not to talk with applicants directly, but my advice as a city attorney is that you not do that. I think it just muddies the water and I think it complicates issues.
Is it, is it possible for us to pass some sort of resolution that we don't talk to any applicants about their application up until the first, you know, the licenses are issued or something to that effect? I mean, it's just something to kind of make it, you know, an easy reference for ourselves in terms of our behavior. And just to be transparent to the community that it's, you know, hands off from us. It's not our, it's not our making this decision.
Yeah, I mean, if for no other reason, then basically you're looking to give yourself some cover. And you could easily say that the commission has made a decision based upon a recommendation from the city attorney that we not discuss licensing issues with you outside of the normal process. You can certainly do that. Candidly, I don't know how enforceable it is, but as an expression of intent, I think that's something the commission can clearly do.
Commissioner Duba.
So Mr. Gillum, you saying we could establish that as a matter of commission policy, not as a matter of banning a petitioner from petitioning their elected official? That would clearly be a violation of their rights, but we as a commission could establish a policy where we will not engage.
Correct.
So would I do that by just making the motion right now or would I ask you to write us something?
We could handle it either way. I mean, if you want, we could have something that we could bring back to you at your next regular meeting in two weeks. I think that might be a, might be a better way to do it. We can, we could give it more thought, number one. And then it would provide ample public notice and provide opportunity for the public to comment as well.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to bring us back some kind of a resolution that would indicate our intention not to be speaking with applicants for this process in advance of the license being issued.
Motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Duba. Okay, discussion. Commissioner LaVassar?
Yeah, and I'll say this, I've had folks who have been interested in this topic, who have definitely reached out to me. They favored the passing of the ordinances, which I voted against tonight. And they wanted to have some sort of, they wanted to educate me or in some fashion encourage me to adopt them in certain ways. Not because they're applicants, but I suspect because they want to be applicants. It happens. But the question I have is, is this that much different from, say, someone who comes to the planning commission or comes to this commission because they have a proposed change in zoning for their development, whether it's a PUD or something of that matter? Is it different from those instances? And I'm not hearing that we're also making a recommendation that we hold off direct communications with people who are going to be approaching the planning commission or this commission for those types of developments.
Mr. Macy?
So it's a good question. It does feel different to me. I don't know if it's the quantity or not, but also because we have this application period and there's going to be really intense competition for that. I mean, when the things that come before the planning commission, for the most part, it's like, it's a proposal, right? Like it's one person who's saying, "Here's my proposal. Let me explain it to you." But in this case, it feels like when there's this application period where all these applications will be coming in at once, it'll be people saying, "Here's my application. Don't you think it's better than the rest? Here's my application. How could I improve it? What do you think? We'll make Mr. Brake look at it twice." That kind of thing, which feels like it would be tipping the scales rather than informing ourselves about, about the worth of an application. But, I mean, it's worth thinking about whether or not I have the timing wrong. Like maybe, because we are going to be considering these at some point. So maybe it's just during, up until the application period closes or something like that. I'm open to suggestions on that account. I hear what you're saying. But at least to me, it feels like a different process.
I mean, maybe just to articulate a little bit more, this is a competitive process. And other, like if somebody's, your neighbor calls you and says, "Hey, take a look at my fence here. I'm going to the ZBA. What do you think?" I guess that would be different. We don't sit on the ZBA. But I think that's different because that's an application, that's, you know, one, like Commissioner Macy said, one thing, it's not a competitive process where a bunch of criteria is being evaluated and someone could claim undue influence or something like that. Commissioner Duba.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's similar to when we competitively bid a project to have those firms reaching out to sit down, sell us on why their proposal's the best. Would, and that doesn't happen because it would be inappropriate. And I think the nature of this, where we know there's going to be such demand for these licenses and we're going to need Mr. Brake's process to be very clear and transparent and up to his, his analysis of those applications, I think this is appropriate. And in most cases, I think, you know, it's our job to hear from constituents and stakeholders in the community. That's part of what we do. But this process is definitely unique.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Would we be anticipating it being not just the applicants, but perhaps agents of theirs, whether it's architects, lawyers or things of that nature?
Yes.
I mean.
That's my understanding. Commissioner Duba?
Yeah, just to be clear, and we're talking about for purposes of discussing their, discussing their application with the city. All right, and there might be people I interact with in my day job at United Way who might be lobbyists for someone, but I'm just not going to discuss if they have an application. I'm not going to.
Right. If there's an architect working with somebody on a fast food restaurant versus, you know, you know what I mean? Like you can't, my understanding is you wouldn't, you know, some people work multiple jobs, but you wouldn't be discussing anything related to a potential application or application or anything related to that nature. Any agent representing any applicant, things of that nature. That's what I, that's what I kind of feel Commissioner Macy's getting at. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Douglas.
So at the end of the day, we as commissioners really don't have a say in the qualification of candidates or of prospects. That is, the only place we really have a voice is, as with the planning commission, in a special land use approval and site plan approval. So, and I'm not, is there any harm in us talking with those applicants? And I'm being slightly facetious about that or I'm wondering, I mean, can we really have an influence there at all? And doesn't the general guidance against ex parte conversations like we experienced at the planning commission apply here as well? And furthermore, what kind of penalties would we be able to impose? So this is my, my questions.
Commissioner Prush?
You raise good questions. I mean, there's no way that this could in any way have any kind of penalties attached to it. And in no way is it, would it be enforceable any other way. And granted, there are all kinds of other structures within the whole approval process that pretty much do the same thing. But I think Commissioner Macy's point is, and why I would be supportive of this, is that this is a public statement that essentially says, despite the allegations that there's underhanded things going on and, you know, we're all in somebody's pocket and this is all approved ahead of time and we're all in it for personal benefit, that, that's not true. And I think it's important in that regard to put forward this as a statement of policy just so that the public is a little bit more clear, to the extent that they're willing to change their mind on that viewpoint, that we don't all have personal involvement with this. We're not looking out for any kind of campaign contributions or anything else underhanded. We're dealing with this in the most forward way possible as a matter of public policy. And there's nothing nefarious going on. So I think it's important to do it with, with that in mind. Granted, there are other safeguards in place and so it may not be necessary from a safeguard standpoint to go forward with it. But I think it's a good statement, given the allegations that have come out from some members of the public. And it's a way to respond to those.
I'd also say too, it probably adds to a more equitable process for all the applicants, right? So, you know, they're not getting, you know, everyone has an equal shot to be evaluated on, you know, the criteria without gaining or understanding any edge. So I think it insulates, you know, the city from, you know, any sort of legal risks as well. You know, if all of us abide by it. And yeah, there might not be a lot of teeth to it, but I do think that, you know, honor and decency still matter in the, in, you know, what we do. And to the extent that, you know, if you vote for it, you make a statement and you honor it, I think that's important. A couple of hands go up. I think I saw Commissioner Douglas and then Commissioner Duba.
I took, I signed an ethic statement as a commissioner. I mean, maybe we should be dusting that off and sharing it with the public because to me, that is more significant than any secondary action we might take.
Commissioner Duba?
No, I think that ethics ordinance covers this. I think what we're saying is we're establishing a policy just to let the petitioners know, not to waste their time, not to blow up our phones and emails, not to try and send meetings, that this is, and the application process is at sole discretion of Mr. Brake and we are not wielding any influence over that selection. I'd say once a selection has been made and you're, you know, you're the, you're his top choice and you're talking about site plan approval, I don't know that this applies to that. I'm just trying to be clear that that process, we're not. I'm just trying to clear that that process, we're not leveraging any influence over, you know, relationships or anyone that someone might like in the industry. I think that's the idea here. And to the extent that it isn't any teeth, I mean, if we could censure under our general authority to censure if someone was an egregious violation of this self-imposed policy.
We have a motion on the table. Gillum, do you feel comfortable, our next meeting, that's something you can come back with?
Yeah, I can definitely bring something back to you, and, and obviously, as, the commission's never shy about modifying or amending things at the table as you see appropriate, so.
Give us a good piece of clay to work with, sir.
That's the idea.
Any other discussion points on the motion? Sad, I think it's a really interesting point Commissioner Macy brings up, pretty insightful, and, you know, I'm curious to see what Mr. Gillum comes back with. So I will, I'll call for the vote, I'll start with Commissioner Gibbs.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to backtrack, because I don't exactly remember what we're voting on.
Voting on a motion for Mr. Gillum to go back and write a resolution?
Yes, 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 thank you for the refresher, yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Perusch?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. All right, anything else, anyone wants to bring up, Jermaine, to this topic before we jump to the second to last agenda item? Okay, we'll go to number 14 then, which is approval of the third extension on prohibition of marijuana establishments, second reading. Mr. Gillum, this seems pretty great, I'm not sure if you have anything to add.
Yeah, Mayor and Commissioners, this was a safety net put in place just in case we were unable to, the commission was unable to reach a consensus on either the licensing ordinance or the zoning text amendments tonight, there has been consensus that's been reached, so. As to this item, I think the appropriate action would be a motion to reject the ordinance on second reading, and the alternative, no action would also serve the same purpose. But I would, would recommend that you, you act, take affirmative action, and that's to reject the proposed ordinance amendment.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Mr. Brake, do you feel comfortable that you are going to be able to hit the ground running full speed after the August 15 sunset of our current moratorium?
To outline a process, yes, in working with our legal counsel and also with representatives from Dickerson Life, I do.
Anybody want to make a motion? Commissioner Perusch?
I'll move that we reject the third extension of the prohibition on marijuana establishments, second reading.
Motion by Commissioner Perusch, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? Pretty straightforward. All right, I'll call for the vote, Commissioner Lavasser?
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Perusch?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas? She has a sticky mute button.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, all right, now that brings us to the last item of our agenda, item number 15, which was added in the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Perusch had requested that we have a brief update on the golf netting from the Royal Oak Golf Courts. I know this is something, we've talked about this table before, there's been some board recommendations from the condo community there adjacent, for and against, and it's kind of gone back and forth, up and down. So Commissioner Perusch, anything to, to request other than an update to Mr. Filipski?
The only, the only point that I would make is I think this is, this is a different netting issue, unless I'm, unless I'm picturing this differently than our, our previous discussions, this is in a, in a different location than the one that we dealt with before, or am I wrong?
No, you are correct. So, in fact, I think that's, I suspect that's what stirred a lot of this. I, I believe that this may have been a problem for a number of years, but it had been the first that I had heard of it, and it really got started when we awarded, at the end of April, the, the golf course netting for holes four and five. Within a week of that award is when we started to get phone calls. It almost seemed like a campaign, to be quite honest, because it was inundated for a number of days, just call after call, from, from folks there at the Normandy Oaks condos. So seeing that that was sort of becoming the bigger concern very urgently, we reached out, I reached out to the, the president of that association to let them know, hey, if you're going to have a meeting, or if you have some sort of a newsletter you can put out, that we do have, we're, we're looking into solutions. And what we offered them, I think Ms. Andrejack's comment about the, you know, being told there was no money in the budget, I think there was this impression that we could just go down to the, the netting emporium and pick one up and, and go hang it up. So I had to explain that there wasn't a specific line item for this, that would be, you know, relatively expensive. Now, we have the, the folks that were coming in to, to install the netting on four and five, they are going to provide a quote at that time, and that's the solution that I offered them there in, in May when they were calling, that we would get the information, the relevant information, and then present it to the, the city commission. So that still stands. There, they had to fabricate the poles for four and five, so they haven't installed them yet. We expect that to be within the next several weeks, with any luck, but they, they're fully aware that that's what their intention is, and we'll provide the relevant information to look at it. It's going to be considerably more expensive, I suspect, than four and five, it's a, it's a large net. And I also, I have to say, you know, based on the, I visited the, the site, and, and based on the trajectory of it, or the kind of descriptions of where these balls are flying, it seems almost difficult for that to happen from the tee. So I do suspect that there might be another place on the course where these are actually coming from. And I think also that previously, when the trees were there before the storm that they referenced as knocking down the, the net, I think the trees themselves actually had an effect of stopping a lot of those, because if you look at the placement of the net, the trajectory of the ball, it's really kind of awkward off the tee, it's hard for me to see how that would happen. That said, I take the, their word for it, and suffice it to say, we, we are bringing, we're going to present a solution, it just takes a little bit of time, but they were all aware of that. I spoke with the Andrejacks four or five times myself, as did John, and each time, we repeated that we are aware of these concerns, and that that is exactly how we intended to address them. So I'm a little puzzled by some call and, and sound a bit confused about it, because I really tried to be clear that, that we, you know, heard their concerns and are taking them seriously, so that's where that stands.
Mr. Perusch?
I think they're calling because I think universally, people just don't understand how slowly government works, just because of the process that we have to go through. And the fact that it's going to be based on what the people who are going to be installing the other net are going to be evaluating, and the class proposal that they're going to come up with. And that hasn't happened yet, and it's not going to happen for another couple of weeks, assuming that everything goes well. So I think just, I think just people just don't understand that's, that government just takes time. There's processes you have to go through, and, and as you say, you just can't go down to Target and buy a new net. It's got to be fabricated, and it may not be installed until a year from now, so I, I think that's what you're dealing with.
Yeah, I think in fairness to other taxpayers, you've got to present a strong, robust case that you went out, evaluated it, affirmed it's an issue, and then, you know, get the right pricing, you know, not just, you know, because that's the right thing to do, but we have a responsibility to the other 59,000 people that, that call this community home, and I think that's sometimes, you know, a safeguard that, you know, frustrates people, but it's a necessary safeguard to, to respect the pocketbooks of everyone who contributes to the pot here in the city. Okay. All right, so I don't see any action there at this point, sounds like Mr. Filipski and his team have it under control, and that they're working expeditiously, and they're in contact with the association, so I don't know what more this body can do until we receive a proposal from Mr. Filipski. Okay, all right. 11:29, notwithstanding any important or urgent business for the benefit of our community, I'll certainly entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Perusch?
I need a motion to adjourn.
Okay, she moves to adjourn. I see a second by Commissioner Dubac. Any lengthy discussion on this motion? All right, I see none, I'll call for the vote, I'll start with Commissioner Gibbs.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Perusch?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Mr. Lavasser?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. And good night, everyone, thank you for all your time, thank you to my colleagues for robust debate tonight, you did some good work on behalf of the city of Royal Oak, and we'll see everyone at the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Filipski, for your participation tonight as well, as our guest, take care.
Thanks for having me, thank you. Good night.